So it is a little bit past seven, and I want to call the meeting to order. Can I have an acceptance of the agenda?
Second?
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. And just so everyone knows, this is a revised agenda. There was, Lorraine, what, one new?
I don't know, vacation.
Okay. I think there was just one new item that got put on it. It was probably the executive session. So at the end of the meeting, we'll be going into an executive session, and then we'll be coming back in the live section after that to finish up the meeting. Great. First item is walk-ins. Are there any walk-ins here this evening? Seeing none? We will move on to the report of the town administrator.
Couple things real quick this week. Water. You have the updated water report that'll get posted in the morning. I think the two highlights are we finished six of the nine phases of flushing. And if you look at the report that you have before you, we do manganese testing at seven locations monthly. The June testing, all seven sites came back testing positive for manganese. And the October testing, five out of the seven came back with no detect for manganese in the water. We think that's a really good sign that we are getting those pipes cleaned out. The other two came back with much lower detection levels than were detected in June. So we think that's a good sign. We're going to finish the flushing. The weather's cooperating to finish the flushing.
That's awesome.
We'll do a test in the spring to see how we're doing, but we do expect that this will give us much better water quality improvements this spring and summer. So that's a good sign. Sewer projects, we had a meeting with the regional sewer on Wednesday. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen and the Board of Sewer Commissioners have both said that they have voted in favor of the, what I call, the smaller plan, which would be using South Main Street and another connection to the Cohasset sewer system. The plan, again, would be we would take Los Situate and then mine it in gated areas, send those to Cohasset, and then Cohasset would send an equal amount of storage to Hull. The reason for that is Cohasset is pushing up against their plant limits. They can't take a whole lot of additional flow, so then that'd go to Hull. We had some discussions about the maintenance and how we would do it, and I basically said, oh, if I send 200,000 to Cohasset and you send 200,000 to Hull, Hull just gives me a bill for the 200,000. It's pretty simple. I'm sure it's going to get more complicated than that. But the good news is Cohasset has said we're in favor of this. The engineers are now looking at what would have to be done to make sure we can send that amount of Cohasset storage to Hull and what that's going to cost. The meeting for that is on the 29th of December, sorry, 29th of January, just for the record, that happens with my birthday, so plan ahead. We'll get the numbers, what that's going to cost, what it's going to look like.
That's easy.
And then hopefully go forward from there with filing the environmental permits and really starting down the road of getting this project going.
Chairman, may I ask him a question?
Yeah.
Did they officially vote in favor?
I know the Selectmen have taken a five-nothing vote.
Okay.
The Sewer Commissioners said they are in favor of it.
Okay.
So whether they took a vote or not, but the Board of Selectmen is on record voting unanimously in favor of the project.
Awesome. So where would, Situate would connect to Cohasset on, where, right by Lincoln Park?
Well, there'd be two potential connections. One would be down South Main Street, which they would have to soar, and then that would go into Cohasset Center. And then there's a question whether or not we would have to make those pipes in Cohasset Center bigger to handle the flow. And then, what's the other street, Kevin?
Yeah, that would be maybe pumping up over Border Street.
Over Border Street.
Bring it right into Border.
Because they have storage on that end of Cohasset, so whether there's capacity for us to connect some of it in there and go through that way. So that's engineering stuff, but there's two potential connections that we can do.
Great.
What's going to be coming before you, just to give you a heads up, is the North Situate parking lot that the town owns. We are currently in violation of our agreement with the MBTA, which says we can't charge less for our parking lot than the MBTA charges for theirs. Al Bangit, when he was in the town administrator's seat, canceled the contract for the parking meters because it was costing us more to collect the money than we're actually bringing in. So right now, there is no parking fee for that lot. It's full because people have figured out I can park here for free and walk across the street. So Brad was at the traffic regulations today. He'll be coming back to the board, first meeting in December, and we're going to propose two-hour parking for that lot. And we will still carve out WPA in parking for the playground. Brad's talked to the North Situate Business Association, and he ends here, to make sure that wouldn't impact any of the businesses up there. But that way, that parking will actually open up to people who might want to go to North Situate instead of people who's parking all day for the tee. They'll have to go back across the street. Finally, the fields. You received, today I sent you out the email, the activitas in the schools put together about where we are. We are on track for Thanksgiving. We're going to put up some pictures. The field is done, the track is done, the bleachers are up, the press box is up, the foundation for the concession stand is in, that won't be done. So what you'll see there is a partially finished field that's ready to play on, and we will play on it, then it'll be closed back up again. At this point, we don't know if we'll have permanent power for that or whether we will have temporary power, but the lighting company is required to provide power for Thanksgiving.
Oh, good.
So I know we have generators. I won't go into it. We do have a little bit of a backup that I worked out with Kevin, but we're not telling them that they're responsible for providing the power. So there'll be a very small ceremony on Thanksgiving. I know Tony's going to speak, but the big grand opening will obviously be when we finish the whole complex. So we're going to open it, we're going to turn it over, we're going to play a game. It's going to be closed right back up and turned back over to the company. But it looks great. If you get a chance to go over there, the blue track really, really looks good.
It's a good picture.
So that's what I have for today, because I know we've got a pretty full agenda, so.
Any questions for Jim?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
We have a regular meeting tomorrow at nine. After that, we're going to do a walkthrough for prep for Thanksgiving to see where everything's going to be. So if you're around and you want to come over, it'll probably be around 9:30, quarter at ten, we'll take a walkthrough, kind of lay out, make sure we know where the fences are going to be to protect the existing construction and stuff like that. So if you're around, that's what we're going to do.
Thanks, Jim. I just want to go back to the flushing for one second because this is, this is huge. I mean, there's, there's nine flushing stages. You've done six of them, or you did seven, right? Six or seven?
Six, I believe.
Six of them.
We doubled seven by Friday.
And the results are spectacular. We have a little report here that shows the levels of manganese, manganese that were read in June and then in October, and in four of them, they're non-detectable. One of them, they're .01, and one of them is .008. So the ice picking and the flushing program seem to be, you know, having a big impact, which is what you guys have been saying all along. So kudos to you guys and hopefully that, you know, show some results.
We're going to finish the flushing. We'll do more flushing in the spring if we think we need it, and then we have a plan to test before the big flows come on to see what we're seeing in the system in terms of what's going to happen for brown water. You know, we can't say it's going to be gone, but we really are feeling much better than it should be substantially better in the spring.
And the sewer on Cedar Point, that, have the bids come in for that yet?
The bids have. Kevin met with the low bidder engineering company. I'll have to just circle back with him on that to make sure that that bid was complete and that we'll get to work on that.
Okay. So next meeting, maybe we'll hear something?
Hopefully, maybe next meeting, we might before you to award contract.
Great.
That's our plan.
That'd be great.
We have to meet with all the other bidders, but we think, we make that to a point.
Great. Okay. It is, we've got, we have to wait five minutes for the public hearing for the tax classification, so why don't we talk about the, skip an item and go to the polling hours? Kathy, you want to go now?
Sure, thank you. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thanks. So again, this is a, it's customary for you to announce and vote on the polling location for the presidential primary, which is going to be here before we know it. We've already, we're already prepping and doing work for elections for 2020. State elections are always 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM unless something comes up and we have to open the polls earlier. You would be changing the opening times, which hopefully 7:00 AM is sufficient. I was going to talk about early voting tonight, but this, it hasn't passed in the Senate. They were, they're proposing early voting for the primary, five business days prior to the primary, the week before during business hours. It's passed through the House, but it hasn't gone through the Senate yet. I think they're finalizing that, so we'll skip that for now until that's final, and that's it. Primary's March 3rd.
So this is in March?
March 3rd is the primary, Tuesday, March 3rd.
Right. And it's at the high school from 7:00 to 8:00?
Correct.
And then we'll get the days of early voting back at Town Hall when that gets passed.
Right.
Great. Any questions for Kathy?
Just one.
Yeah.
What's the cutoff date for registering to vote if you're not registered?
Oh, it's February, oh.
In February?
It is in February. It's 20 days before the election. I just had it on the calendar too, which I'll post the calendar probably in the middle of December. I've got the whole election calendar for 2020 with those deadlines, along with nomination papers for the town election. Again, that's coming up more quicker than we, I've got all the masters ready for those, so those, those will be ready in early February if anybody wants to get an early start and run for the town election seats. And I have a list of who's re-upping on that or, you know, who the incumbents are if they choose to run again. But all the nomination papers are ready for the 2020 annual town election, and we're basing those, again, on the original date of the May 20th, you know, the original town election date, because we don't know what, how long it's going to take for the legislature, so. But yeah, it's February, oh, I don't want to say it.
Well, you said it's 20 days before.
It's 20, always 20 days before an election.
Okay, so mid-February-ish.
Yep.
Any other? If not, can I have a motion, the first one, only?
Move the poll hours for the presidential primary to be held on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, at the Situate High School Gymnasium located at 606 Chief Justice Cushing Way are 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second?
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
So we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yes, you will.
Anything else quick here?
Probably not. One-day malt at J.R. That's an easy one.
Which one? The common vic at?
The one-day malt.
Is the one, is the board 143 group here? The new common vic license? No? Was someone coming in for that?
Yes, but probably not here.
Oh, yeah.
Tony, I have 7:15, so.
Okay.
It's a little slow.
Perfect.
Mr. Danny, he's fallen asleep. We should probably get to him.
7:17.
Who's that guy?
It's not used to be at office.
Actually, they meet on the same night as us, don't you guys?
Yes.
Great. So I see you guys walking by us on the hall. So you guys are here to test, to discuss the tax classification?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Selectmen and Women, Town Administrator and Madam Secretary. I'm John Danny, I'm with the Board of Assessors, and with me is the Director of Assessing for the Town of Situate, Joe DeVito. This evening, we are here to make our recommendation with respect to the tax and whether or not there should be a split between the residential rate and some of the other potential uses that you can have a split rate. Just by way of background, as a part of your materials, Massachusetts Constitution was amended in 1978 to be able to create classifications in land use. The type of land use you could have is residential, you can have commercial, you can have industrial, personal property, and then also open space. Cities or towns in the Situate, for Situate, that are certified as assessing property at full and fair cash value then are able to, be able to have kind of a different split in the tax rate and shift the burden, if you will, to other uses from residential. Providing, however, you know, that it's within the limits of the law. Now, by doing so, you're not going to be increasing your levy on the tax. What it does is that you're going to reallocate within the levy the tax to these other areas like commercial and industrial and personal property. As it stands right now, the share of the levy, which is raised by commercial, industrial, and personal property classes, can be increased up to 50%, providing that the residential and open space remain at 65% if it wasn't to change at all. And so the board took a look at it like it has every year, and of course, if we look at our current percentage, 96% of taxes come from the residential, just like Duxbury, we're the most, the highest. If you look at Hingham, it's at 88%. You can look at Cohasset, they're at, I think it's 93%. Marshfield's at 92%. Norwell is, is at, I think it's 85% or 86% actually. Pembroke is at 87, and Kingston's at 87. Plymouth, for example, is at 80%. And the reason why I mention this is because that's at the residential rate and the others at their business or commercial rate. The only community in the surrounding area that has a split or bifurcated rate is Hanover. They're at 85%. So what we looked at is we take a look and say, okay, as a part of your information, like, who are the top five taxpayers here in Situate? Ironically, or not ironically, one would realize, but you're looking at two of the top are utilities. Bay State Gas is paying about $17,700,000. That's their current assessed value. The other is Mass Electric. They're at almost like 12 million. That's what they're being assessed at. What's interesting is Toll Brothers now has come on. They're now being assessed at 12,300,000, almost 12, almost 400,000, 12,400,000, as opposed to the previous year, which it was being assessed at 3 million. So you can see it's over a 300% increase. There's another one, Kent Village. They're, they're being assessed at 7 million. It hasn't changed too much. I think the fourth happens to be more current on First Parish. I take that back. It's not, it's somebody else.
Please take that off the record, Mr. Danny.
So you can see that those are the top four, the top five. The other thing that we added was just to give you an idea of the state class total. So the sheet that was included in your package shows all the classifications that the assessors take a look at, and for example, the largest one happens to be single-family. There are about 6,809 dwellings that are being assessed, residential for $4 billion. The total amount that's being assessed is $5.2 billion for the town. That's what we're using. Finally, I think, you know, there are various reasons to increase or not to increase, and we gave you the considerations, both economic and also political. You know, when you're, when you're taking a look at trying to do a split, you might consider the percentage of commercial and industrial properties here in town as compared to the residential, and right now, we know it's a 4% as opposed to 96. Will the increase in tax burden to that other use, whether it's commercial, industrial, significantly lower the tax burden for the residential rate? The answer's no, and I'll show you that in a minute. There are other considerations. You might say, are the businesses of the type that require extraordinary municipal services? If you had a car wash, you might be using water. You know, you look at grocery stores or restaurants or car dealerships or hotels or office buildings, they use a lot of electricity, but in this case, it doesn't use the town's utilities that they have to pay for. Does the business significantly contribute in a non-tax way to the community? Is the timing proper to move for, to multiply, for, to multiply a single tax rate? You know, these are considerations that we took a look at and, you know, for you folks to consider in addition to. Finally, we provided you basically fiscal year 2020 shift in scenarios if the board were to consider it. Presently, the tax rate is set at $13.50. That is a decrease from last year, which was $13.74. If you're to increase it by 10%, we gave you a breakdown that what's that going to be for a taxpayer? It's going to be reduction on the average residential house of $592,874 of $36. But if you were to do it to the average commercial, that's going to be an increase of over $1,000 to that business. And then we worked out another scenario, 25%. If you were to increase it at 25%, what would that do? And then we went to a 50% to show you that the disparity between a residential at the average rate would be a difference of $178 to the average residential at $592,000 house as compared to the average business, which would be a $5,551. So the Board of Assessors voted unanimously to keep the factor at one as opposed to splitting it, mainly because we're just not in that position to be able to split it. And so we provided you that information, asked you for consideration, and then take a vote on it.
Great. Thank you for the information. It's all overlooked at in the past, and the numbers really haven't changed that much. Has it, it's never been more different than a one-to-one ratio. Is that, that's correct?
In my memory, yeah.
Yeah. Any questions for, yes, Ms. Campfield?
Just one. Joe, I mean, in one doc, one set, it says the average single-family home value is up to over $600,000 now?
Right. And then that spreadsheet at the end, that includes condos.
All of them, okay.
Yeah.
Do you know what the differential is over fiscal '19? It seems like it was not that high last year.
No, the residential, meaning the single families and two families, three families and condos, went up an average of 4.4%.
Okay.
And the average tax bill of that same group is going up just over $200 or 2.59%.
Okay. Thank you.
Sean?
No, thank you for the explanation, Joe. That's very, a lot of detail. Thank you.
Much better than the previous assessors that have come before us.
He looks familiar.
Sounds very nice.
I just had, this is a curiosity question. We have here churches, mosques, synagogues, et cetera, assessed at $14 million. Do we tax religious entities?
No, that's, that's all the value in town. So that $5.2 billion is exempt and taxable.
It's exempt. It gets assessed, but it gets exempt.
It gets assessed, but it's exempt.
The only thing that's, the only thing that's missing, and I was looking for it, was fossil fuels, the use of fossil fuels, but I didn't see anything businesses in that, so.
No dinosaurs?
Not getting taxed either.
Fossil fuels.
Thank you.
Maura?
Nope, no questions. Great job, Joe.
Yeah. Two sentences, thank you.
Yep.
Set me up.
So the only thing I'd add, just in layman's terms, you know, we don't have big business here, so the impact on a small business is exponentially bigger than what it impacts the individual homeowner. Like John went through the numbers, you know, $36 compared to $600, $170 compared to $5,500. And the thought over the years has just been that that would drive small businesses out of town and make it, make it too much of a burden for them. And I believe that's the reason why, over the years, we've kept it at a one-to-one ratio, so. And it seems to make sense. We don't have the big targets and all these other stores like Hanover does, which is why I think they're the only other one that have a different ratio where they can throw it off on the big corporations and not really feel the impact on small businesses. So, that being said, any, any debate or can I have a motion?
Yes. Do we have to put the factor in here of one?
Yes.
So move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the residential factor of one according to Mass General Law, Chapter 58, Section 1A.
Second? Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Before we let them get away, I just want to let the board know we're talking about the budget. I'm not going to talk about a new growth number being up significantly. That's Joe.
Right.
He's been out there every day pounding away and making sure he's getting all that, finding all that taxable value, so that increase is, is almost all due to his hard work in his department. So while he's here, I'll give him some credit, and then tomorrow, I'll tell him, you know, I'll take it back.
Well, thank you, but if the market turns and structure slows down.
And you'll get blamed for the lack of control.
Joe, take it. Take it.
And I will say to Joe's credit, Joe and Jackie have both been instrumental in going out into the field to try to assess the properties in a fair amount as opposed to, and on a regular basis. So they've both done a great job, and I know he spent a lot of time outside, I don't want to say outside the office, in the field in order to get accurate readings, which is always helpful to the taxpayer because they're the ones who are saying, is my property being assessed fairly? And if you go and you see it, he does an excellent job with Jackie, so just kudos for doing it.
And now everyone knows what he looks like.
Lots to do.
It's Joe.
Joe, thanks. John, thanks for coming in. Always good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Happy holidays. It's always nice to see you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
You can stay around, John. We'll go on a little bit longer.
That's, that's okay. You have some interviews, I think. It used to be longer when he was here.
I didn't say it. I was, I didn't say it.
We did the polling hours. The next item that popped for discussion is the reduction of debt exclusion impact on fiscal year 2020 tax rate. Nancy Holt, the financial director. Hi, Nancy.
Good evening. I will be brief as well to keep your meeting moving. Last year at this time, we had a discussion about using the energy rebates we received, the incentives we received on the new buildings to reduce the debt exclusion impact on voters. After that time, we received one more debt exclu, one more energy rebate incentive, that was for the middle school, for $19,135.62. And we also, in June 2019, the Library Foundation made a donation to the town of $250,000. At the time, Treasurer Pam advised you that that would probably be in excess of the 12 million by approximately $1,721.37, which it is. So we would like to apply the energy rebate incentive and the excess of that donation to the debt exclusion that's going to be added to people's tax bills. It's not a whopping savings, but it's where it should be reflected to give the taxpayer some type of benefit from those additional funds, and it would be a total of $20,000 for $2.32 estimated impact to the average homeowner, average value home. Excuse me.
Can you explain the $1,700 that is over the 12 million?
Sure. So we had already borrowed $5,489,000 for the library project, and we have a ban outstanding for $186,000. The library project has about six different funding sources. Amongst them all, we cannot go beyond 12 million, and we are beyond the 12 million. Even if we pay down this ban, which we're planning to do, probably at your next meeting, for $186,000, we're still going to be over by the 1,700 because it just happened to work out that the Library Foundation had that little bit of extra money, and the last bond we issued, we included $489,000 for the library project. So if you talk about cutting it close, we cut it real close. So in order to not violate the $12 million appropriation, we need to do something with that 1,700. I believe what the foundation was always trying to do was to lessen the impact on the taxpayer of the project, so this is a direct way to do that.
So one of the sources of funding is donations?
Correct.
And that brought us over, because we only, how much did we end up borrowing for it? Seven?
$5,489,000.
Well, we didn't even borrow to the.
Yeah, we had the, the grant, we had the donations, they had transfers from their trust funds, we had the borrowing, and then surprisingly, we had about $17,000 in interest on the grant. So we were required to keep the grant in a savings, in a savings account, and due to Pam's good investment, there were funds from that as well that helped offset the cost. And due to Pam's good investment, there were funds from that as well that helped offset the cost.
Any questions from the board?
No, I'm good, thank you. Karen?
Karen?
So, just so I'm clear, so should the foundation, because I know they just finished up their fundraising, come with additional funds that will also be used for general debt reduction, or how will that be applied?
It'll be dependent on how the board accepts it at the time they bring it forward.
Give it to the project. Okay.
It'll be allocated to some other fund source, probably.
With the same intent, though?
Correct. In this case, it was $250,000. Only 1,700 of it had to be allocated elsewhere.
And I think they said, didn't they come in and tell us that they were, that that campaign has stopped?
They just, yeah, they just had their last hoo-ha thing, so, yeah. But, you know.
So, now it'll be towards other library projects, I imagine. No other questions?
That's $2.32, not annually, just...
A one-time thing.
A one-time thing.
Last year was about $200 with the, we had almost just over a quarter of a million dollars of energy incentives that you applied.
Okay. Just so people aren't looking for it every year. Not that they'll see it.
Can I have a motion?
Move to apply the $19,135.62 in energy incentive rebates and the $1,721.37 in excess private donations received in a one-time reduction of the debt burden for the middle school and library projects on the FY 2020 real estate tax bill.
Second?
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Goes against? None? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Nancy.
Nancy, are you doing the next one? Oh, no, Pam's. Shuffling chairs. Hey, Pam?
Good evening.
So, this is inter-fund borrowing?
Speak of that beautiful field we have.
Time to pay for it?
Now have to pay for it. So, the field renovation project is at the point where the available fund portion has been nearly exhausted, and the CPC and ineligible costs supported by borrowing are coming into play. So, there were two borrowings approved, as you know, at the April 2019 Annual Town Meeting for the renovation project, and Nancy has requested that I borrow $1 million from Article 3D, that's the capital planning project, for, to borrow, was authorized to borrow, excuse me, $1,600,000, and a million from the CPC portion for Article 12, authorized to borrow $3,080,000. So, in accordance with Mass General Law, the town may temporarily borrow against stabilization and unappropriate, unappropriated free cash. All funds will be reimbursed before fiscal year end.
So, Pam, the money that you've used so far has just been the money that was on hand that CPC already had in their accounts? So, all of the allocation of cash has been used, and now it's to the borrowing portion of CPC?
We can't pay another bill without borrowing some money. We have a little bit left, but not enough there.
But is it the borrowing that the town is taking, or the borrowing that CPC is taking?
We need both because the bill that we have in-house, or being voiced, we have in-house, has some ineligible costs on it.
Oh, okay.
Because the turf is now down.
Okay, so we're doing both, and then you just figure out what bucket it goes in?
Yeah, I'm asking them to split the bills so I know which bucket to go to.
So, the CPC can't pay for the ineligible costs. That has to be paid on the town's portion. So, that's why it's being...
Got it.
Actually, you could have explained that better than me, probably.
No, I couldn't have. Well done.
Any questions for Pam?
No, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
More, any questions?
No, thanks for calculations. It was great backup. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
It was thorough. There are no questions.
Thank you. Pam, can I have a motion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the inter-fund borrowing prepared by the Treasurer Collector in the amount of $2 million for the purposes of the athletic field renovation project.
Second?
Second by Ms. Kern. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Thanks, Pam. God bless you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, it is, we're a little ahead of schedule. So, is Board 143 here? Carrie? Hi, Carrie, how are you? Come on up. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. We read your material, but why don't you just tell us, and there's 17 people watching, what you know?
So, I have a small business. I've been renting the kitchen at Stillwater and North Situate for the past year, and I would like to take over some of the retail space there to sell products associated with my business. I run a cheese and charcuterie business. I make boards and deliver them all over the sell shore. So, I want to have the ability to sell cheeses there, charcuterie, baguettes, honey, jams, things like that.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Awesome. And how long have you been in your current spot?
A year.
A year.
Just in the kitchen space.
Right.
But the spot has opened up. I need to sort of take over and set up some counter space and refrigerated cases.
Now, do you sell the board? Like, do you make the board?
I do.
Or do you make, you make the board and you fill it with food and cheese?
Yes.
Any questions?
Are you taking over the space for the proprietor that was there previously, or you...
Tara's Kitchen was there for a couple of months this summer, and it just didn't really fit in with Stillwater's.
Okay.
It was more morning stuff, so it wasn't traveling that important. But I think that this would be a better spot. I just made my boards there and then sold them online and delivered them. And I just think it would be a good fit.
Great. Good idea.
You take walk-in business?
Well, I sell grazing boxes there that are suitable for one to two people, and I always have those stocked. And then I have the larger boards. It's all on my website.
We're happy about North Situate's business.
Right, exactly. We need it.
Yeah.
I just wondered why we're not requiring samples.
My kids said, too.
Well, when you come back. Did you have any questions?
No. Good luck.
Good luck on getting cheese tonight.
Do we have all the Board of Health steps approved? Yeah?
Yes, it'll be handed to Board of Health.
Okay, so I just wanted to double check, yeah.
Yeah, they came in on Friday, and then we're just waiting for me to get one of my refrigerated cases in, and then he'll finalize it.
And then finalize it. Great.
So, let's say somebody wanted to order one of these. What website would they go to?
Board 143.
Board143.com?
That's right.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve a common vic license for Board 143 LLC located at 776 Countryway, pending final Board of Health approval.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Aye. It's unanimous.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Great time to start.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Is Stella Wagon beer here?
We're way ahead. Look at you.
Okay, we'll come back. Oh, we're kind of ahead of schedule. I see some rec, people here. Maura, were you expecting anybody else for, to talk about the JV baseball field? Or is... You're good? Okay. Jim, are you going to, yeah?
We talked about it briefly last week in my update that we do have an issue with JV baseball. I used to put JV baseball. I had conversations with Kevin and Maura about Central Field and the old Gates Field behind the Gates Building. I had Kevin talk to everybody currently who uses the Gates Field because we felt that'd be the best field to put a JV baseball field on, given the way it's set up now. And Kevin, we can say we got buy-in from everybody that needed to buy into that. So, if the board wants, I will start the process to have a JV baseball field constructed up there, and the funds will come out of the money we get from Toll Brothers for field projects. So, I want a recreation here in case there are any questions about the usage or how we would do it.
And the first step would be get an engineer in there to kind of map out what it would look like?
Yep.
It's a challenge. So, my question is, is this a temporary solution? What is...
No, this would be a regular field that we would construct. So, it's not a lot of work. If there's a field already there, you basically have to take, skim it out to do the infield, and then replant an infield, and maybe some fence work. It's not a, it's not a huge engineering issue.
So, is this, you would think this would be a permanent spot for the next, or our second?
Until such time as we came up with a use for the B wing and maybe needed it for parking, yes.
There's limitations there. There's not a lot of space outside of, you know, the field itself.
It's not perfect. It's not perfect, but it's the best place we have to get a field up as quickly as we can. When will it be ready? Tell me what the weather's going to be like.
And some sort of fencing and netting, I assume, to protect the houses?
Yep.
I know Hanover has...
It'd be a new, a new backstop and all that would be installed.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think maybe we can talk about the different options.
Well, we can talk about some of what we're doing over here for fencing around the baseball fields, too.
Yeah.
And do something like that.
Well, I guess I'll ask a layman's question. Maura's looking worried. Is a JV baseball field different than a varsity baseball field?
Same dimensions. So, we've lost the JV field.
Here.
Here. So, we basically have two fields. We'll have one field after the construction's done, so we'll be down a field. There's enough room at Recreation Field for this field. In fact, years ago, that was the high school baseball field. In that same spot. It's the best draining field. We had a lot of issues last year with the grass fields back here draining with the bad spring weather. So, of the two options, Central Field or Recreation Field, this was really the better of the two options. There's a track there that's overgrown that, you know, would have to be removed, and, you know, would remove that as part of this project.
So, does JV baseball ever play games on the varsity baseball field?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So...
We eliminated the JV field.
We eliminated JV, so we got a women's softball field?
We have, yes, right.
Right.
But now we don't have a JV field, but we have two down in Central as softball for girls.
Right.
And, you know, it's noticed, and it's needed. It's not only that...
I'm not questioning that it's needed. I'm just trying to, in my own mind, figure out. And so, does anyone get displaced by this field? Does soccer get displaced? You know?
Well, it's going to be reorganized because we're going to have, I call this a workhorse up here, that we're going to have so many, you know, turf fields.
Yeah.
That we should be able to handle losing that in the springtime. And that will convert back in the fall, probably, to a soccer field.
All right.
There's enough space in the back, Karen, that, you know, I guess in the outfield area where they use it for soccer and lacrosse now. And there is a baseball field there. Now it's smaller.
Right.
And you can't use both at the same time now. So, basically, it'd be a bigger baseball field, and that soccer, lacrosse field will remain.
Good, good.
It's a little like a multipurpose. Sort of like what the JV field was up here. They use the outfield for football at one, as a practice field up here. So, it would be used for multi-different things, but it would be primarily in the spring of JV baseball. And we talked about it when we did the, when we had all the information going in on the CPC project up here about we were going to lose a field, and baseball has been very patient with us to... But now they're approaching and saying what's going to happen.
So, what's going to happen now to the Central Field that we didn't renovate, the Tower Field?
Well, what happened was last year, the town did a little bit of work on it on their own. They did a really, really nice job. So, our men's softball league and the girls' softball play on it, and it's, it's really looking nice.
Oh, that's great. Oh, good. Because I know we had put that off until we could figure out what was going where. So, that's good to hear. Great. That's great.
We supplied some infill mix for them, and it's, it's working out nice.
Perfect. Glad to hear about the men's softball league being happy.
Yeah, they're happy.
Good.
That was my question. I wanted to understand the positioning of it and the impact of that soccer, lacrosse field. So, you answered that, I think, right?
Well, with Cushing now open, we gained that back. So, you know, Kevin and I are looking forward to, forward-thinking some of the grass fields when we get these fields up here. We're already looking into rejuvenating the ones that kind of got beat up now.
Taking them offline for a little bit, yeah.
We can rejuvenate and still use them as long as you don't heavily use them at the same time. So, we're looking into some company to give us a little, some estimates on that. But that's our forward-thinking on that.
The high schools behind all this, too?
They are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have something from Coach Parkins that he's all for that, yeah.
Okay.
Spoke to Situate Little League Darren Campbell and Pete Umbrian. He's the new AD. Pete and I actually walked the field. He's very excited about it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
My question was with the track. Carrie answered it. I asked the same question. That's it. Not that it was used much anyway, but...
The track portion? No, I don't think so.
Right, right.
No, it's all overgrown.
Right.
Pretty tough shape.
It's really not salvageable now, I don't think.
Yep. Nope, that was it.
I think it's the old crushed stone.
It is.
I always got slow times on that track. That was because of that.
Who's a stone, Charlie? Not that I was there watching him.
Karen?
Just, just, I know you haven't engineered it yet, but I'm sorry. Am I orienting it right? The baseball field's going to be at the, closer to the B wing as opposed to the back of it?
No.
It's all the way in the back.
Hitting towards the school.
So, if we need that space for parking, we don't have to dig up a brand-new field?
Probably not. You're not going to need a lot of parking.
Well, that's a different conversation.
But that's not, the outfield, we don't have to do a whole lot with.
Right.
It's after you have enough of the face stack glass. We'll skim off the infield, put a new infield, and then have the clay grass, probably sod, actually, be a fill grass to get that. Also have to redo the irrigation. The new clay that you use actually has to be watered or it gets really, really hot on concrete. So, the irrigation will be done. A lot of that will fill this a little bit.
I don't think there is irrigation there.
There is.
There is.
There is?
Yes.
Where the baseball field is?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Excellent.
I think that baseball field, as you said already, that used to be the varsity field when that used to be the high school.
Way back.
Way back in the day.
Totally. Sean played there in the 20s. Before my time, Sean. Sean hit one over Gates once. You remember that?
Played at Central. That would be Nick Mulder.
Yeah, so, a couple of things. I think with, just a little bit of scope of what's going, you know, we're going to have one baseball field that's going to be done sometime between March and May, depending on the weather, as Jim has said. Baseball season starts March. I think tryouts are mid-March. Is that right, Bill? Somewhere? Somewhere in that range? So, there's no field for anyone to practice on. There's a freshman team, a JV team, and a varsity team. Even when that one field is up and going, there's still only one field for three teams to try and practice and play games. And what happens is it rains, and then you play every day for eight weeks. So, it's, it's going to get a lot of use. So, we really do need another field. I think with all the chaos of everything that's been going on, we kind of dropped the ball and not starting this sooner, but that, that's done. So, I think, hopefully, the weather will be, be working with us, and we can actually get a field usable for, you know, early, mid-March, and try and take that into consideration because it's, it's going to be needed right away. So, whatever the construction component is, we've got to think about really short-term use, not planting grass and hoping it grows or any of that sort of stuff.
Yeah, we would use sod, and again, if anyone, the weather, you would get the sod down in early March, it won't start to take as the weather's right. If not, it ends up going dormant, and then comes back when the weather gets nice. But if it's not growing, you can't go on. You'll just leave it until it starts growing.
So, I don't know if there's anything that we can possibly do now, before it snows, if there's any kind of, I guess the engineering aspect.
Yeah. I already talked to an engineer, and they said they're going to turn it off.
So, in all likelihood, we're not going to be able to start anything until March, any sort of...
I mean, if the weather's good, you could start working on it over the winter. I mean, it's site work. It's...
Okay. Well, you understand, you know...
It's really, when can you, you know, is it warming up? If you're putting in post, can you pour the concrete for the post holes, things like that? And then when can you actually put down the grass? Site work, if it's cold and not rainy, they can get machines out there with the site.
So, just keep that in mind in terms of, anything we can get done, we'll save days, which will happen.
It's as fast as you can.
And I think that's the best site, too. I spoke with the varsity coaches over the last couple of days. They think the sites at, you know, first of all, we just put $350,000 into the field closest to the library, so we really can't do anything there. And the other one really would hit, people would hit balls on the, on the street, and that would kind of endanger stuff there. So, that field is pretty big when you get out to the soccer field and the fence out there. So, I think it's the best location.
The lefters might like it, but the righties, it's a poke.
So, the only thing is the house is behind there, so we'll have to come up with some sort of fencing and netting system to keep the balls in, you know, on the field.
Just along those lines of streamlining, Kevin, engineering out to construction shortly after, or...
Yeah, I think we can do that.
And then we'll have to see how much it costs. I have no idea.
Side of the engine, side of the engine app, flash, I click on it. I hope you'll get the idea. Figured, depending on what we do, between 100 and 200.
And we did get 400 from Toll Brothers, so there is funding.
This is what it's for, it's available.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open it up to the audience. Yes, sir.
Dan Conley, kind of the crossing. I think it's a great idea. I really support this. I just want to make two points. There will be some folks that will be displaced by using that field. Little League has used that for farm and junior farm games and practices for the past, you know, since I've been here 20 years or so. So, they will be impacted slightly by this. I'm not sure how much their registration is not involved in that anymore, but they still use that for practices and games. And this is, I think, the third or fourth field that has, I'll call, disappeared for Little League in the last few years, just so people are aware of that. Second point, there are other players. Tony mentioned freshman varsity and JV teams that play on a big field. There's also about six Little League seniors that play on that in the spring and the summer, and there's also the adult baseball teams that also use that field. And in addition, we have let the Legion teams use that field. So, it's just an additional burden on that one field that we'll have in the spring.
It'll be very difficult with one field for Little League to play any games because the high school schedule will encompass all of the available times. The great thing about the field, though, is there's lights, so they can play double headers. You know, you get almost twice the usage out of that one field because of that. So, I assume...
Which one? The new one?
The new one.
The new one.
So, they could have the varsity play at four and the JV play at seven, whereas in the past, you couldn't, you couldn't do that.
You can have practices till nine after midnight.
Yeah, that goes over one.
I have a question. Mr. Chair, may I ask your question? So, if we still have a Little League shortage, looking at Dan, you know, is there any way to accommodate that shortage with these funds as well, since we're only estimating that we're...
We'll have to find a place to put it. I had Kevin talk to the League about this and...
Yeah, I mean, the Little League's behind doing this field, and they raise that, you know, concern as well because they do use that. It's a smaller field. But there are fields in town that are underutilized that, you know, we can look at. Purple Dinosaur is a perfect example. You know, there's, there's fields that, you know, we may be able to...
And we could potentially use some of these funds to, whatever we need to do, bring that, those up to par?
We could use these funds. That's, that's why we...
That's sort of my question.
...had to switch with Toll Brothers because we felt we had more needs around town than just building a small field. Had to switch with Toll Brothers because we felt we had more needs around town than just building a small field.
Right. Okay.
Right. And I'll keep bringing up, we do have the land on Offclack Road that we, we have some preliminary designs for. Didn't have a baseball field on it.
It did. It had two small, um, Little League fields superimposed on top of the rectangular.
Oh, you're right.
They were slightly undersized, uh, but they did have them.
That could be Little League. Could they be Little League then if they're?
They, they could. That, um, I don't even wanna guess what the development of those fields require.
Oh, certainly not within what we're talking about now. Yeah, but for future.
Access.
Big row. Yeah.
It is available. Um, we'll go see Dan at the CPC. He might just pass out a lot of book for that, but that's gotta be a more.
He's gonna save his money for a while.
Long-term plan. Those would be substantial one internals that, woods and fields.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
There's also the concern of.
Just your name and address.
I'm sorry, Sam McGon, thirty-five eleven to have. I'm in Citro Little League. So the, uh, there's also the concern with what happens with Green Bush at some point down the road here too. So we have to be a little bit considerate of that fact because if we remove the field, obviously we have to add one, but it might be need for two. So.
Yep.
The enrollment, as Dana was wondering, has stayed the same thankfully, even though, you know, people love just talking about the demise and the Little League is still a great sport for little guys. So obviously the field's an issue every year.
And that's a real, a real point to have to bring up whenever we figure out what's going on with the water over there. Uh, but that'll be planned in with the whole, the whole plan of, you know, building a water treatment plan as well. Anyone else?
Phil Collins, forty-five, we're lame. Uh, I'm, I'm coaching staff with Craig Parkins at the high school, so definitely a whole lot of practice. And my concern too coming in was the, the track. That was the only thing I had. It sounds like they're gonna, they're gonna take that out. They're gonna sod over there?
I'll leave that up to the guys.
Whatever the engineers say.
Okay. Yeah, that would be the only thing.
Could be a warning track.
Well, it's gonna be deep enough. The final one maybe, but the inside one, no. But, uh, yeah, I think that's, that's probably the best location for it. And it's the time. That's our major concern is how quickly will it be available? So I saw is definitely, you know, I'm all for that. That, that's the quickest way. In some cases, you could, you know, sod a field within three weeks after it takes root. Um, so hopefully we can, you know.
Have a mild winter.
By April first, I don't, you know.
We use grass not until twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
Or twenty-twenty-one, we don't leave it for, we need it to acknowledge this.
Right. And, uh, so, so, yeah, so the season officially kicks off around the beginning of April. Practices and tryouts are around mid-March. So the first couple of weeks. We've always thought about that anyway. And, uh, I know Coach Parkins has talked to him and he may be, he may be, uh, about potentially, uh, games in the winter time. Which is what we've done in the past, having a football field. We might set up, uh, sort of a technical type of diamond situation and practice maybe forty-five minutes. Even that to, uh, intimate lacrosse practices or something like that. So we've been good about, you know, organizing that with the other coaching staffs. And, uh, you know, to do that, so.
Anyone else? Any other questions?
Nope.
So do you need a, a motion from us?
Yeah, Lauren gave this one. Motion to approve recreation field at three twenty-seven First Parish Road be designated as the junior varsity field. Shouldn't it say junior varsity baseball field?
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, whatever. For Citrit High School and to move forward with the project. Second?
Ms. Conley, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Thank you guys for coming in.
Thanks for doing all that work.
Back to Stellwagen?
Um, are the people from Stellwagen here? Come on up. Is anyone from Kennedy's here?
Uh, no.
Were they coming or no?
Uh, they weren't planning on it. It was just me.
So tell us about your event.
So the event, uh, will take place on December fourth, fifth, and sixth. It's a three-day, um, fundraiser that we're partnering with Kennedy's on for Citrit, uh, Community Christmas. The, their piece of it is, um, you know, they're doing Christmas tree sales, but also they're donating a portion of, uh, food sales from that night or those three nights, uh, and will be donating a portion of beer sales, uh, from that night. So the idea would be to set up a, um, a, a temporary pop-up beer garden, uh, on the premises of, um, of Kennedy's uh, between the hours of, I think it was, I don't have it in front of me, but it's.
It's five to eight.
Five to eight. Yep, thank you. And, uh, we would, um, you know, be an enclosed, um, location. The, uh, the entrances of the, the beer garden would be, um, staffed with, uh, either Kennedy's employee or, or a Stellwagen employee. Uh, we're all tip certified at Stellwagen, so anybody pouring beer, uh, would be tip certified. And, um.
So for three straight nights?
Yep, correct.
Great. Any questions?
Is there an entrance fee?
No.
So my question would be if there's no entrance fee and it's a fundraiser, it's all coming from whatever profit you make by selling the beer and whatever food?
Correct.
Um, I'm looking at the fact that you're expecting a hundred people.
Mm-hmm.
I feel as though if you're not charging an entry fee, you could be completely overrun.
Uh, so in our, in our experience, the, the, the events that we've done for, for pop-ups, we've done them at the Hannover Mall Food Truck, uh, Food Trucker Association, uh, Food Truck Tuesdays. We've, um, we've done them at Starland. We've done one, um, at a, um, craft vendor in Marshfield. And they're all, they're reasonably well-attended, but, I mean, we've never seen more than a hundred and fifty people.
So are you advertising this or how are you getting the word out?
We will be, yes. We'll be advertising, uh, on our Facebook, well, you know, Facebook, Instagram, social media feeds. And, um, Kennedy's will be doing the same.
Well, I'm just concerned about the parking there first of all. And second of all, I, I am quite concerned about, uh, that you could be completely surprised by the number of people who show up, especially, uh, given the popularity of, um, Untold Brewery. I think they've been kinda surprised at the numbers of people that they've attracted to. Are you having entertainment?
No.
Okay. My questions. Yeah, I have a question. Um, sort of about the genesis of the event. I know you're coming in for the wine and malt. Um, is this an event that you're working in conjunction with, I don't know how to phrase this, Citrit, Citrit Community Christmas? Or were you, is it through them and the Kennedys and they pulled you in? So what's the genesis of the whole operation?
Sure. So Lisa at Kennedy's had reached out to me at Stellwagen, um, about the possibility of partnering on an event like this. And they already had the relationship with Citrit Community Christmas. Uh, and we thought it would be a great opportunity to piggyback on top of that and join in.
Okay, that's what I was curious. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Um, sorry I missed the beginning of the conversation. I'm, um, I think the pop-up's great. I think it's great for business. I think it'll bring people into Kennedy's at a time when people are doing their shopping. That's great for the business. Um, my concern, it has nothing to do with you, is that we have had that they're, you know, they have a hiatus on venue, on, um, uh, what did we call it? Um, at.
Event?
Using it as a venue for events until they figure out their zoning.
Gotcha.
And this, and this is nothing to do with you, but to Kennedy's is I feel like this is a little bit, um, going through a maybe a loophole. Obviously, it's not a party per se. Um, and I don't necessarily, I, I mean, I absolutely no reflection on Stellwagen. I think the pop-up idea is a great idea. Um, but I have a little bit of concern because we had that very lengthy conversation about that particular use. Um, obviously, there's no music. That was a bigger concern about use, the use. Um, but I think Ms. Conley is right that, um, I think people will be happy about this and you will have a lot of people. Are you gonna have a police detail? Do you, have you discussed that? I didn't see anything.
We hadn't discussed it. Um, the only, the only, um, comparable event that I could think of where we did have one was at, um, Star, so Starland had their fiftieth, I think, birthday celebration this summer over, um, Labor Day weekend and they required us to have one. And, uh, I personally, I thought it was overkill. Um, we maybe had twenty-five people show up over three hours. Um, so obviously.
Excuse me, sorry. I would suggest that if, if the board felt this is to be approved, that perhaps there'd be some sort of evaluation after day one and that should it be necessary because it's popular that we require that? Cause it's tricky. It's tricky getting in and out of there.
Well, I would almost argue that we require it from the beginning just because of the lack of parking in that area and not understanding and it's nighttime. It's.
Do it the other way around?
I mean, obviously it's nighttime, but it's wintertime, you know, it's dark earlier. Um, it's not, it, you know, there isn't the parking as there is at Starland, you know, so I, I could see it's not a good comparison. Um, and it's a busy road. And it's not really equipped for, um, bar traffic, if you will.
So when, I mean, that, that's fine. Um, honestly, if it's a scenario that warrants having a police detail there, then that means there's a bunch of people showing up and theoretically we're selling, you know, we're selling beer, right?
So I guess, you know, and I don't mean to cut you off, but you just made me think of something. So I guess that goes back to the genesis of the event, right? It should be the people that are running the event that come to get the police detail and all that, correct? Not, not Stellwagen for.
I mean, he's asking for the, for the alcohol permit. So the person asking for the alcohol permit has to be here to get it because they're the ones putting up their license and their insurance and their tips.
Right.
So.
But I mean more from a police deal, sorry, police detail aspect.
Well, two separate really questions. Does the event need a police deal, detail overall, getting people in and out? And does this particular portion of it need a police detail, given the fact that they're gonna be serving alcohol? What type of car are they gonna have?
I'm more, yeah, yeah. And I'm more concerned about the getting in and out.
The only time we have people go through the special event process is when they're doing something on town-owned property typically. We require them to get a police detail.
So no, normally what we would do in this situation is we would have the police keep an eye on it. And if it was causing a problem, then they would have to get a detail for the next night.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I share everyone's concerns about the detail and you may or may not recall, I'm all for someone trying to, uh, think outside the box and make up a dollar wherever they can. So what's going on at Kennedy's on the fourth, fifth, or sixth? If I'm not mistaken, it's families going out to get Christmas trees, right?
Correct.
Call me old-fashioned and stuff, and I like to drink beer, right? But you're with your family, you know, you're with your little ones and the big deal is to find the tree that's, you know, I just, I don't, I, I don't know. I, I'm all for, I, when they came before us and, you know, others disagree with me, I. And, and your beer's probably great, all right? But I just don't see, you know, I, I, it, I don't, I, it's a time for family to pick out their trees and get what they get for the holidays and stuff, all right? And, and then maybe go to a restaurant or something after or before. I don't know. Am I missing something? I don't know. It's not what, you know, people are gonna be at Kennedy's getting things for the holidays. I just.
Well, that's why I'd like to understand and it's not.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, no reflection on you at all. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, like I said, it's probably great. It's great beer, but.
You know, to, yes, people do that, but I think if you have beer gardens there, then you may have people that are, think, oh, that's cool. Let's do that and we'll go get our decorations and stuff. It's not really necessarily family. Just in their defense, I can.
I just, I.
Sorry?
It's a party.
It's a party.
Well, I just, I don't know. For me, when I, when my kids were little, and I miss those days. It was a big deal to go get our Christmas tree and I just don't see it. I mean, you know, I'm sorry. It's, you know, I, and I might be alone, that's all. And I, and all I said before, he was great. That's great, you know, with his events and stuff. I just, I don't know. We might, you might get a real ugly tree if that's the case. You might not, you might regret it.
Everybody's standards on Christmas trees will go down.
Looked straight when I was.
Come home. So that, that's just the way I'm, where I'm coming from. Sorry if, you know.
I, I'll say a few things. I, I'm, I live across the street from there and I've spoken about this in the past, but I'm looking at it open-mindedly. I, I think it, it is a party. You know, you're, you're putting up a beer tent and serving beer. I assume there's gonna be some sort of music playing, not a band and something, but I'm sure there's something gonna be going on, like you probably had at your other events. Um, the parking is a big concern. You know, the exit coming in and out, if there's a hundred people, there's fifty cars, there's not parking for fifty cars. That's a really tough area. They probably only have maybe a dozen parking spots. And, um, as someone mentioned earlier, um, you know, we talked about the weddings over the summer where these events weren't gonna happen anymore. And unfortunately, you're here to hear about this. You probably didn't even know about this. Um, we're probably the people of Kennedy's should've come in with you and, and discussed the event.
Fair enough.
It puts us in a really difficult position because it's a cause that we all support, you know, a hundred percent. Every single one of us have, um, donated, um, gifts and money and all this sort of stuff. So it's really, it's not, it's hard for us to say no to such a great cause. Um, I don't even know what percentage of stuff is going that, you know, is it five percent of your sales are going there or something? Or is it, or is it significant?
It would be more than that. So we would do a dollar per, um, a do-, uh, it would be right around five percent. Yeah. It'd be about a dollar per pint.
So it's, you know, five percent of, of your sales, you know, is probably the lowest you could do, right? Um, so it is, it is more of a function than a, than a charity, I guess. Um, but again, I'm in a difficult position because of the charity that you're supporting, um, and the timeframe of it, because the event is
It's in two, two weeks, yeah.
So, um, so I, you know, I kinda leave it to you guys to see how you wanna proceed here. It's, it's, um, you know, I think it's, uh.
We don't really have a, we, another meeting to get Kennedy's in here.
We do the day before.
But it's really not enough time.
Day before the event.
Yeah, I think.
It's also a three-day event. You know, it's not like.
Yeah.
It's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday nights. It's, have you ever done three in a row before?
Not consecutively.
Why is, sorry, Dan. Why? Why is it a three-day event? Just out of curiosity. Is the setup that hard or, you know, you do?
For us?
You do one days all the time.
No, I mean, for us, the setup is easy. Um, I think that they just decided to do it for, you know, I mean, I'm sure Friday was probably the ideal time, but to give it, uh, give it as much time as possible to, um, you know, for folks to enjoy it or, you know, the longer we're open for, the larger the donation.
So it's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday?
Correct.
I, I just have real concerns logistically. And I do wish Kennedy's, whoever's, there's someone managing this event, I assume.
Yes, yep.
I think that person should've been here tonight because, you know, I would like to suggest, for example, that perhaps they should talk to Robin King about if he's not open yet for, fully open, that they could send excess cars down to, uh, Hook and Harvest. Uh, they probably can't do it at the, at the, um, Knights of Columbus because they're selling trees down there. Um, you know, I, I frequent Kennedy's and there's really not more than, if I can count them, and I had twenty-five spaces tops. And so I just.
Now, I, I do believe that they've cleared out, um, a large s- spot out in front of their building that, you know, obviously they're putting Christmas trees in, in a lot of those spots.
That's where the Christmas trees go.
But I think that some of those spots would be available. But again.
Do you know where the tent is going?
Our tent?
Yeah.
Uh, so we're either, we're, depending on weather, we could potentially set up inside, uh, Kel Mahoney's, uh, photo gallery uh, if the weather's inclement or there's a patio in between there, uh, his gallery and the, um, main.
Right.
Kennedy's spot that we, uh, we could set up there as well.
And I assume Kennedy's is gonna be promoting this on their sign out front and, I mean, if I, I were them, I would.
I would assume so, but I don't know for certain.
I, I guess, and I don't wanna be a Scrooge, and that's what I'm afraid people are gonna think, but I, I would be more comfortable if they tried it for a night. And leaving aside the issues we've got about Kennedy's not doing events or what the rules are for them, you know, so as not to, we're late in this process. We can't, we. them, you know, so as not to, we're late in this process, we can't, we gotta vote it up or down tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have no other choice. And instead of completely saying no, I would suggest maybe just do it Friday night, um, and see how that goes. I, I, I just would like us to be more aware of what could go wrong. And, you know, Jim, as we know down at Heritage Days, we had some issues with the food truck showing up and trying to get someone to respond to how to handle the food truck while an event is in process. It's not easy. So I would just assume not have to worry about having someone down there and say, oh, we gotta get a police detail for tomorrow night. Um, and there, there's no telling, I assume Wednesday night will be kinda slow. I would assume Friday night's gonna be, or Thursday your best night. Um, and it's busy down there that, that weekend. I mean, a lot of people just go down there to get the tree that they want and off they go. Me, I shop around, but-
We can have one of the offices, one of the command staff can out on Wednesday and look at it and make a determination whether they think a detail will be needed on Thursday and Friday night regardless of the size of the crowd, just by saying, hey, look, this, this is gonna need a detail.
Yeah. Well, and I guess the question is, how much does community, Citu, Community Christmas expect to make on this? And, you know, I wish somebody from, one of them had been here as well. This is big to me to just all of a sudden come in and you're the poor guy sitting here with the liquor license.
I just sent you in.
I know.
Again, and I'm, I'm well aware of the fact that I'm looking like a Scrooge here and I don't live near there, but I, I, I'm just concerned about it, so. Um, and I think people would be tempted to go across the street and park it more circle or, what's the other street?
Or Yonah Lane.
Tony's Yard.
Yonah Drive. Tony's Yard.
To tell you the truth, they park right on 3A.
Yeah, which is not safe.
Yeah, which is crazy, because it's dark at four o'clock.
Yeah. What would it do, um, to you and your business if you only committed to one night? Like, do you have certain sort of thresholds that you try to meet?
Nope. So essentially, uh, I told Lisa at, uh, at Kennedy's the same thing. I was like, we, to us, this is a worst-case scenario. Uh, you know, we get our name out there to people that might not know we existed, right? You know, we're paying somebody to stand there for, you know, three hours. It's really not that big of a cost to us.
Right.
So the, the downside to us isn't super great. So if it was just one night and it was a Friday night, uh, if it was a Wednesday, we may not do it, right?
Yeah.
Because ten, ten people will show up.
And I wouldn't do that to anyone. I wouldn't just say, oh, just do it Wednesday night.
Right.
Um, but, you know, Friday night-
Friday, it, you know.
Thursday night when you're in college, that's the big night, but Friday night when you're in the suburbs. I'm just saying.
I mean, honestly, I think the reason that it was Wednesday, Thursday-
Wasn't it Thursday night?
Was to try to get as many people to go on the slower nights-
Sure.
That wouldn't otherwise do it.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
What does the board think about contemplating approval just for one night? I, I almost think it's like a compromise.
Can I make one comment about the charity? I, I did reach out to them because I, I was curious too about how it all came together and they really are grateful to how, obviously be named, but they hadn't, they were not a participant-
Part of the planning.
Planning it. They were, as I understood it from them, is, they were, you know, Kennedy's was generous enough to tap them, but it wasn't part of a-
I haven't had any communication with them. I was going through Kennedy's.
I think, I think regardless of what the board approves, if they approve one night, two nights, three nights, I think we have to send a letter to Kennedy's saying, we've had this discussion, you're not supposed to be having these type of events. They, they do not meet your zoning. Um, you know, I don't think the board wants to say no to Citu Community Christmas and the timing kinda puts you in a bad spot.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if you do approve some nights, I think we have to tell Kennedy's, you're not supposed to be doing this. You need to get into the zoning board of appeals to get approval for these type of events.
Do you know where they are in that process, Jim?
I don't think they've applied yet.
Okay. It does say on their website they're in the process.
I have not heard that, that they've applied. Um-
Yep.
She's gone, he is gone. She might know.
So, um, with that-
See if there's anyone in the audience that has.
Oh, sure.
Anyone in the audience have any comments?
Nancy Chapman, 74 Prince Street. I just have a question. Is Kennedy's also donating a portion of their sales, whatever evening, what evenings, to Citu Community Christmas?
I, I think so.
I don't know.
No, no one's here. I believe they are.
So I, yeah, I was told that they'll be, um, selling food that night and that the idea was to donate their proceeds from selling food. But that's, it could be more-
Isn't that another license entirely, selling food?
Oh.
You know?
So actually, with the information, so Karen, um, you had confirmed that Citu Community Christmas really isn't a part of this.
They're the recipient.
They're just the recipient.
Yeah, which is nice.
Terrible donations.
Nice gesture.
Right, yes.
But, but they were not-
It's not really-
As far as I know, they were not part of the planning. But they do appreciate it.
And this woman, Lisa, she couldn't come tonight? She, she worked for Kennedy's and she's the one that called you?
She, yes, Lisa, uh, Lisa Wells reached out to me, um, and, you know, when she, when we talked about logistics for the event, um, you know, in the past for the other events that I've done, for the liquor license part of it, I've just gone to the, uh, to the selections meeting if necessary.
All right. Well, what do you guys wanna do?
I just have one more question.
Yeah?
How detrimental would it be to you and your business and your brand if the answer was no?
Um, I'd probably lose $50 for the application fee.
I'm gonna give you all.
All right.
We'll give it back.
Thanks.
What do you guys wanna do?
I'm not inclined to support this.
I, I can't either. I just can't. It's-
Not even one day?
Nope. That's me, though. I think there was a lot more information that came forward than what was submitted to us that, um, makes it difficult for me to support it as well. That's why I asked you about your business. I'm concerned. I think you've gotten pulled into a situation that wasn't fully vetted. Um, and if it's not, I think it's a gesture on behalf of Kennedy's to give proceeds to Citu Community Christmas, which is fabulous, wonderful, very nice, they can still do that, selling their trees the same way that they do today. So they can still give proceeds. I don't think it's-
I wish this had come to us sooner because I think we could've ironed out a lot of issues and, and you wouldn't have been put on the hot spot here. Um, and no one wants to be Scrooge, but I'm not inclined to support it as, as it stands.
Good. So there's no motion? All right, thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
And support Stellwagen.
So to record, it is really good beer.
It is. I was gonna say, I have heard great things about Stellwagen, so.
Thank you.
Again.
Samples.
What?
But we are on time, so that's a good thing.
Okay. Moving right along, we have, um, we did the baseball, we did that, so we're on the board and committee interviews. And it looks like we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. I'll start at the, is Jessica here? Hi, Jessica, come on up. And just give us a minute to get organized. Why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself as we get our books ready?
Uh, my name is Jessica Gardia and I live on Logan Nelson Road in Citu. I bought my house about a year ago and I grew up in Brandal. I have two small daughters that are, one is going to Wampatuck Elementary School and the other one is only two and a half, so she's just running my house. So, it's a lot of fun. Lots of fun.
And why are you, uh, wanna get involved in the affordable housing side of stuff?
So I actually bought my house through the Affordable Housing Trust back in September of 2018. And I will tell you that, um, as a divorced mother of two small children in today's market, I wasn't sure I was able, gonna be able to afford an apartment, let alone buy a home. Um, and for me personally, and again, you might call me old-fashioned, but when I thought about raising my children, it was very important to me to have a similar childhood. You know, we all remember when your mother sent you to the neighbor's house to get a cup of milk or a stick of butter or a couple eggs because you didn't have any, and I really wanted that for my children. Um, and when the opportunity was presented to me to purchase my condo through the Affordable Housing Trust, um, it was really like a dream come true, to be honest. So I wanna get involved in the community itself because the sense of community is very important to me. Um, I want that for my children. I loved listening about the Little League. That stuff's very important. My eight-year-old did, um, psycho cheerleading. It's like, that sense of community is just very-
Psycho?
Yeah, so it's called Citu Co-Hast.
Oh, crazy cheerleading.
I know.
Psycho cheerleading.
I was like, how fitting for my eight-year-old. It was perfect, but, um-
Why didn't you have a cheerleader sell the stuff?
So the sense of community is just very important to me and I found that through, um, purchasing my home. And I think that getting involved in the community, and if I could have one small inkling of participation, of possibly giving that to somebody else would be like the ultimate payoff forward for me. Um, and my experience with affordable housing, I think, is a great asset to the trust because I, um, work in affordable housing. I manage over a hundred units of low-income housing tax credit along with some commercial space. I work day in and day out with monitoring agencies such as DHCD, HUD, Spectrum, so on and so forth, mass housing, mass partnership. So I think that my expertise in that part of it would be a great asset to the trust.
Dad, me, hello.
I know.
Yeah.
What can we say?
I know.
May I say that, that, have we had a more ideal candidate for anything ever?
I don't think, yeah.
I mean, seriously, everything, for me, what you just said, you're young, you understand, you benefited, you've moved here. Everything that you are is what we're hoping to have affordable housing be a success. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I would say to, uh, Mr. Chair, that as a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, just listening to Jessica's, um, credentials, really, really important to this group. You know, Nancy's been a great asset and just understand, you know, working also in the industry and having someone like you knowing how to navigate some of the difficulty, as you know, you know, even having to go through the application process and, you know, just some of the misperceptions of what we're all trying to accomplish. So I think you're a great candidate.
And I think, I just have to say, because I work in affordable housing, I had everything, like, ready to go.
But you knew.
Like, they were like, we usually send people on like a witch hunt for this stuff, but I, because I work in it and I know the ins and outs and working with the Institute of Real Estate Management on affordable housing, um, I, I know it. It's my expertise, so.
You'd be a great asset.
Oh, thank you.
Any questions from the right?
No, my kids are psycho kids too, so.
Totally.
No, and I, my only question was, we, there was another candidate, Lorraine, and-
Uh, is there another candidate?
I don't think we, you know.
Ruth?
Which one is this lady talking about?
I don't-
Reappointed Ruth, she was a renewal.
Oh, right.
She's already appointed.
Let me just take a peek.
Sorry.
There's a Karen.
Karen Desler.
Karen Desler, who was on the Explorer Commission. Um, she did put this down and wanted her interest.
We did interview her?
She was interviewed back in 1986. She did not wanna come in for an additional-
Oh, okay, so I'm, that's why I was having trouble.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's one opening.
Problem in remembering her?
I did, I did suggest a notifications commission for her. I think she did-
Probably at the end, I don't see it.
Also one of her interests.
I mean, he's a-
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
No, Jessica, I think your experience with property management and the affordable is right up.
Of course she changes her mind.
Welcome to Citu.
Questions for Port Jessica?
Okay, I think we, uh, I think we're all set. There's one opening, um, and there's one renewal. I think, did we already vote the renewal?
Yes.
Okay.
Renewals are-
So there's just one opening. Um, if Sean can, I, we're gonna make the motions later on. I guess they're, are they at the back, Lorraine?
We have.
We have a motion today as of the evening.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
I'd do it now before she changes her mind.
Any other question?
Yeah.
Wanna make a motion? Sean, go ahead.
I, yeah, let's see, I just have to find it here. Oh, you go ahead if you found it first.
Move to appoint Jessica Gardia to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term of three year, uh, oh, wait, actually, I can't do it. I need to abstain. Sorry.
All right, I'll do it. Move to appoint Jessica Gardia to the Affordable Housing Trust for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program has, has been completed within 30 days.
Second.
Second, Ms. Canfield, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, cheers.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Abstain, Lorraine.
No second thoughts. Okay, next is, um, Matt Chase, recreation. Matt, how are you?
Good.
Recreation is number 20, 20. So we've all read you sing.
Should've brought my guitar, I guess.
So tell us, tell us about why you wanna get on the recreation.
I was looking for a way to volunteer. I heard that this opening came up. Um, my kids have taken advantage of the programs in the rec department. Uh, I've coached in, uh, the Little Shooters Program for a few years, which is a great program. Uh, also members of my family and my wife's family have all been involved in the rec department, uh, both as on the commission in the past and, um, for working in programs. So I, I thought it would be a good fit. Um, I also, you know, I come from, I'm a working musician, so I know they have, you know, the rec department currently has programs for the arts. Um, and I think I could bring some ideas in terms of the arts side of things to expand that for the community.
That's great. That's right. Rec, recreation is far more than sports. It's-
Or team sports, yeah.
Yeah, team sports. Um, great. Any questions?
No, thank you for volunteering.
Yeah.
It's great.
You're welcome.
All right, any questions?
Um, no, I think it's a great perspective to have the arts represented in recreations. I'm not sure that we have too many others. I'm just trying to think off the top of my head when I go down the list, so.
There's only a few. There's some, there's guitar lessons offered. There's, I know, is there some art? Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I even mean just on the board, like on the board.
Oh, it's a, oh, it's a board.
Yeah, so I think it'd be really great to have your perspective.
78, Dallas.
Yeah.
Any sort of thoughts on, uh, programs that you've seen elsewhere, you know, through your experience that you think would be beneficial to add?
I know, I had mentioned tomorrow in the past about some, possibly incorporating some ensemble programs. I know that there is some space at the Gates School. Um, it was something I used to run, uh, before at a, at a store, you know, sort of a store school. Where it was basically kid bands.
Oh.
You know, so, and it was something that I know kids love to do. So it's sort of, you know, you could take, I know sports is very prevalent, but it's sort of, you know, I, for me, when I did it, it was sort of like being a coach for, for kids and, for music.
Yeah.
So I don't see a lot of that around, so I, you know, there are certain ideas like that I'd like to bring.
Great idea.
Yeah, so.
Great. Sean?
Couple of questions and then I'll make a motion before he changes his mind. Um, have you been to their meetings? Do you have time? Can you make it work?
I can make it work, yeah. I haven't been to one, but I can make it work.
Good. Do you have anything to say before I move to appoint him?
Oh, all right.
Uh, no, I think Matt would be awesome. And I just would re, um, just mention that I know that there's great opportunity to collaborate with music and facts because they're always looking for programs for the middle school area.
Yeah.
And that they have them up and running and I could- And that they have them up and running and I could, I foresee some great collaboration.
Yeah, yeah, I've talked to a couple of the music teachers before, for the middle school, and they had some great ideas, so.
Yeah.
I see a lot of people from the Rec Committee back here. Do you guys have any comments or?
No, I think it's great and I'd like to see some music and arts, you know, the rest. Not everybody's into sports, so I could support everybody.
We do collaborate with facts too, already with the Country Fridays.
Yep.
So I'd like to see more too, especially in that junior high level, I'm always trying to pinpoint that to get them involved. I think Matt would bring something.
He might not be too late.
Yeah.
To teach him.
That I'm looking for.
Just support Matt one thousand percent.
Do the thing.
So we've put all this music burden on this man.
Pressure's on.
We're gonna be looking at the next release.
You can still help with baseball, you can still help with, you're not gonna go in the music closet.
Yeah, exactly.
But, no, I mean, you've given so much to the community, you know, you know a lot of people and I think, you know, if you have the time and your schedule, that's really what it, you know, what it comes down to, and if you have it, then that's great, I think you'd be a great asset, so.
Great.
With that, I'll turn over to Sean.
Tony wants to know if it's too late. You think you could teach him?
Oh, you are?
In other words.
I need a backup.
Their family has taught all of my kids. We've paid for so many Chase houses.
Mostly Sam. My brother, I was gonna say, I didn't get any of that.
Thank you for that. No, I'd like to make a motion, and all kidding aside, I mean, great candidates, thank everyone for coming out and volunteering their time, really, we've said it. But on that note, I'll move to appoint Matt Chase to the Recreation Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and the completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second, by Ms. Canfield, further discussion?
Yes, one more thing. Would it be putting you on the spot if you could sing maybe Happy Birthday to Tony? Cause his birthday is coming up.
We'll help you.
That would be, that would be inappropriate.
Out of order.
I haven't used this gavel yet.
I move to the Board of Selectmen lead.
I couldn't resist.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Second by Karen.
Thanks for stepping up.
I move that the Board of Selectmen lead is on.
Will be there forever.
Birthday?
Who says it's not fun on the board?
It's coming up, it's coming up. Andrew Gallagher.
How are you?
All right, what number are we? Twelve, number twelve.
Hi Andrew, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
So you're looking to get involved in Conservation Commission?
Yes.
Great, so tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to do that.
Sure. There are a few factors, I think, that are leading me to sign up now. I've been in Situit for ten years now and I feel like it's, I'm inclined to volunteer to do something and start contributing a little more in town. Two things changed in my life, I took a new job, so I now work for the Trustees of Reservations, running the South Shore, South Coast portfolio. So I'm now in the field of conservation. I also am no longer commuting into Boston and traveling for work anymore, and I'm based in Hingham, and so I can, can make meetings in the evening. I've had a sort of passion for conservation. I now spend many nights in rooms like this at Conservation Commissions and zoning board committees.
It's unstuck.
It is, it is, but it's important work and I recognize at those meetings how important it is that people are willing to sit down and try to problem solve and reach goals of these commissions, so I felt like it was time to volunteer and raise my hand.
I'm on the wrong one, that's why I can't find it.
Is there, the first thing that came to mind is just, is there any conflict of interest? Can you, are you allowed to do this?
Yes.
You are?
Yeah, we don't have any property in Situit nor any on the horizon, so.
You may. Karen, any questions?
Trustees aren't even taking much land anymore, right? They've got so much and it's hard to manage it and it costs a lot of money.
Yeah, we are, they are taking it, not, you know.
Yeah, we had to find someone else to take land here for us.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm really interested in your background because we are just really starting to get off the ground with some of the properties that we've managed to amass over the past ten, fifteen years. We've got about four hundred acres, we're just getting access to some of it for the public through, you know, small parking lots and that sort of thing. So your expertise would be invaluable. I was really happy to see your background and thank you for volunteering.
Sure, thank you.
Do you have time? Those are long meetings.
They are, I do, I do, because I'm local and can come over and I can arrange my schedule.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, do you have time also, you know, conservation, as you know, is very technical, a lot of visits, sometimes site visits during the day, not always, but, you know, certainly the, the board that exists today does a lot of coordinating and getting out to the different sites that may need some personal visits. Is that something that you think you'd be able to fit into your schedule?
Yes.
Awesome, you are a great candidate, so thank you for stepping forward.
Sure, happy to do it.
Karen?
No, I think that you, there's no training curve here, learning curve on this, so, yeah, thank you for raising your hand.
And Sean?
No, I have nothing else to ask, other than, again, thank you, appreciate it, and again, perfect unity, great.
So the only thing I'd ask, you know, in the Concom meetings, it's actually one of the toughest boards, I think, to be on in this staff. Do you know the regulations? Is that something that you're gonna have a leg up on in kind of sitting on a board and listening to someone talk about putting a patio in a flood zone?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a perfect expert or lawyer or anything like that, but yeah, I mean, I think I've sat through enough of those processes and I think know the balance of studying up before the meeting on the, whatever issues are at hand for the meeting ahead, relying on professional staff to help answer some of those technical questions, but yeah, I think I do have the baseline of knowledge to jump in.
So working for a trust, does that make you very, lean very far to the left or right, whatever, in terms of conservation, or are you able to come in and look at, you know, cause it's really a, you know, finding a happy medium a lot of times.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I am passionate about conservation, I think it's really important and something, you know, to be taken very seriously. I mean, at the same time, I'm, I'm on the other side often, putting up a structure on a conserva, piece of conservation land or rebuilding a bridge over wetlands, so I, I understand being on the other side as well. And, I mean, my, my view is that when that work is done well, the goals of conserving as much as possible are important, but doing it in a way that can be creative to reach those goals and allow people to solve the problems that they're coming before the board with.
Great. Great, well, thank you for coming in. Just quickly for this board, there's one opening, is that right? Lorraine, am I reading this right? So there's two renewals.
There's two renewals and one opening. Mr. Harris moved.
Right. So the renewals are Penny and Lisa?
Yes.
To be considered, yep.
To be considered. They've both served the maximum, you know, the six or twelve years, that's great. Awesome, thank you for coming in and I think we'll be selecting, if all goes well, later on this evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next interviewer is Brendan Collins. Brendan, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. If you can tell us a little bit about yourself, your background and why you want to do this.
Okay, so I'm Brendan Collins, I've lived here in Situit for sixteen years now, just about sixteen years. Throughout, I've been volunteering with certain organizations, in particular coaching teams and whatnot, I try to be involved in the community and I'm looking now, kind of step up my involvement, I guess, my kids are getting a little older, not old, but any stretch, but I no longer have any toddlers, so figured I would, you know, try and get a little more involved, so I really, I really like it here, so. I took a look at the various openings that were available and conservation just seemed to be something that kind of struck a chord with me. Fortunately, I'm not, you know, I'm not a employee of the trust, so.
Well, that's okay, neither are most of the other members, don't worry.
So, you know, but it is, it is something that's very important to me, it's something that's very important, I've looked over online, like their, their agendas, their meeting minutes and see what's going on and whatnot. And I really would like to embrace the challenge.
So first of all, let me say, the selection process is based on whatever we think the best fit is to the committee, so you could be, you could have written a book on it, but that doesn't mean you get on the committee, so it is, it is an open. Tell us a little bit about what you do do though, so we can find your skill set and see if it's kind of what we think the committee could use.
What I do now?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I work in technology, so I'm a software developer, I've been manager, director type in the past for technology companies, software companies and, and other computer technology type of things.
And Concom, you like it because you love the town and you want to conserve open space, you know, all of us kind of do.
We do, I mean, there's a balance, but, you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not staunchly opposed to anything, any progress, but, you know, there's a balance in everything and, you know, there's a, there's a medium and, and that's, yeah, I love the town and I want to, you know, I want to conserve natural resources and what we have here, our open spaces and whatnot.
Great. Any questions?
Have you worked on any boards or committees before in any other towns or places you've been?
Um, I was, I was on a condo board and before I moved here, I lived in Weymouth. Yeah, that was kind of tough.
It's really tough.
But moved in and got right onto the board, so the whole time I was living there, yeah, I was on the condo board there. Nothing else is really jumping out at me as far as like, you know, in, that was in the last twenty years now, not necessarily, you know, but mostly.
Have you seen any of the meetings on TV at all?
I haven't actually watched any of the meetings, no.
That was gonna be my question, sorry.
Anything else?
No, that was one of my questions too, whether you had seen any of the meetings and you obviously have great technical expertise, which I think that helps in being able to decipher some of the plans that come before people, you know, before the board, the conservation board, they're constantly looking at plans and having builders, developers, homeowners come before them to get different things approved. So it's not just protecting the environment, to Tony's point, it is being able to understand the impact sometimes of what folks are trying to do. What is your thought about lengthy meetings? They can be very long meetings, just setting the expectations up for you.
You know, it's, it is clear in the, in the minutes how long the meetings are, so, you know, I, I, I'm looking forward to the challenge.
Okay.
You know, and as far as, actually, you mentioned plans and whatnot, I'm kind of a pseudo-advanced do-it-yourselfer, so like I do my own permits and I've been doing my own building and stuff like that, so, you know, I don't know if that's.
So you've gone through a lot of the permitting process and understand all that?
Yeah, I've gone through all that and stuff, so, for, you know, some, some minor stuff, I mean, I'm not actually living on, I don't know what, you know, I'm not bordering a marsh at my house, so, but that's.
Good. Karen, anything?
Well, just, as Karen mentioned in the previous, that, you know, the Concom is, it is challenging and in a lot of times, you have to just apply the rules, even though something may not.
Like the rules.
Yeah. And I have to say, Sean and I, when we're reading your resume, we don't understand anything in the technical skill section. That is a skill.
Thought you mistyped all these.
We're like, I don't know what any of them.
It looks like, it looks like gibberish.
But, but it is important.
At least it doesn't say DOS.
Yeah.
So that's good.
I took that off.
Unfortunately, with Concom, sometimes there are difficult choices that you are, you are required to make because it's the, it's within the parameters of the regulations, so.
Right.
Just wanting you to be mindful of that, cause it could be frustrating sometimes.
That's fine with me, I, I have meet, you know, in the business side, I've, I've had my own business, I've been, you know, director manager, you know, working on growing a business even for other people, those have difficult decisions as well. I mean, I don't know, you know, I'm not necessarily, I like to find consensus, if I can't find consensus and there has to be a decision, then that is the decision. The rules are kind of the rules, really.
The rules are the rules. Thank you for.
Anything to add, Sean?
Well, just, I mean, I think it was mentioned earlier, but I think it's worth repeating, I mean, to Karen's point, you know, you're so qualified, but in your description of why you want to apply here, one sentence hits the nail right on the head. You're very interested in conserving and protecting the town's resources while balancing, you know, while balancing the appropriate growth, says it all. Yeah, thank you, thanks for throwing your hat in the ring.
So, I'm just looking at now, we've got four people applying for conservation, you're the second, we have two people after you, there's only one spot, so three people.
Well, potentially three spots.
Oh, you're right, there are potentially, I misspoke, yes, cause there's two renewals.
Potentially three spots, cause we didn't renew anybody yet, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
So there's potentially three, so there's at least going to be one person that all look like they're very qualified, that can get involved in other boards. There's openings everywhere, so if you don't get selected for this, and not that I know anything, I can look into the future, but to anybody else here, please look at the other list of stuff. I mean, we had two people who draw from water resources just this week, cause I think there's opportunities there. There's opportunities at Affordable Trust, there's opportunities in a lot of these, so I, I think, as Karen mentioned, Concom's hard, so I would advise anybody to go to some meetings and see what's going on and start getting your, your feet wet.
Literally.
It takes at least a year to get.
Yeah.
Obviously.
Right, so, but that's not saying, I have no idea what the outcome's gonna be, but just don't be discouraged if it doesn't, and look at the other ones and apply.
Would water resources be of interest to you since that is sort of on the conservation sort of?
Yeah, I thought about selecting a few, but, you know, I just decided I would just go with one.
Sure.
You know, go with my top choice and see what happens. It was just the spur of the moment thing.
Okay.
Well, thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Try and vote later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Gerald, is Gerald here? Is Spencer here?
Spencer, how are you? Good, yourself?
Good.
Last man standing here.
I don't know, my audience loves.
Oh, there's thousands, there's thousands and thousands watching.
On YouTube for life.
Okay, as we get to your resume, if you could just tell us a little bit about your background and why you want to do this.
Perfect. First of all, thanks for reviewing my application, taking the time today. I'm a new resident at Situit, me and my wife moved here in May, two-two-four Gannett Road is actually where we are. And, you know, I immediately kind of wanted to look around, see where I can get involved with the community. We don't have kids at the moment, so it's, it's kind of hard to actually kind of do that at the same time, when you're not immersed actually in a board or a committee or events like this. So, you know, we chose Situit, we moved out of Boston for fairly obvious reasons, probably why we all live here. Basically, you know, the natural resources, the water, just the small-town feel and feeling like you're kind of living in the woods. I came from a small town, about forty-five hundred people. Growing up, there was no zoning or conservation regulation on the town level and while it was good, because we were mostly a farm community, you were able to see the toll that that kind of took as years went on and, you know, eventually that got moved in, but being able to see what happens, if it's not there, that kind of paired with us living, we live on the Gulf River, we abut the Gulf River, and being able to enjoy that all the time, you know, it's just something that makes you appreciate that and want to make sure it's preserved and taken care of now and for, you know, however many years down the road, especially given all the population and environmental factors that play against you doing that now. So admittedly, as you guys had said before to other candidates, there is a lot of work that would have to put into ahead of time. I have watched a meeting, again, admittedly not the whole thing, they do run a little long, at least that one. But it is, you know, a challenge that I look forward to taking on full steam ahead and, you know, I would like the opportunity to do.
Great, and just tell us a little about what you do now?
Sure, I'm in commercial banking, so I'm on a relationship side. I am based out of Boston, but I do have a very flexible schedule that I pretty much set myself and I work a good amount per week from home.
Sean? Could you elaborate, you piqued my interest there on what you said when you were growing up? What didn't you like, you saw your hometown may possibly going in the direction because they might not have had regulations in place, you know, zoning and so forth? What, could you talk a little bit more about that?
Sure.
Did it go?
So my.
You grew up in Hingham.
No, no, I grew up in.
I didn't say that, that was Tony.
For example, I grew, Northwestern Connecticut, I grew up in, Wichita County, you know, there's[1709.02] there's a lake there that's fully owned, but it's surrounded by the town, and there are houses that are somewhat summer houses, cottages there. At the time those were built, there was no such thing as septic or sewer there. So there was only kind of one place for the, to end up, and that would be in the lake. As a result, we didn't go into that lake to go anything but fishing on a kayak for a very long time. And to be honest with you, I don't know if I would go in there now. Just as one example. Another example is they ended up building, an outside company built a boarding school in the town, and it was in the bottom of a valley. Well, you know, top procedures weren't taken, and the river that's in the valley got dammed up and ended up going somewhere else.
Karen, any questions?
No. Very interesting group of people coming forward. Thank you so much. Welcome to Situit.
Thank you.
Karen?
Well, my pointed question would be, since we do have two openings on water resources and we lost two candidates, would that be of interest to you?
Yes.
Sounds like, based on what your experience was, it might be very interesting to you.
I'm sorry, I was not paying attention. What committee did you recommend?
You thinking about your birthday party? Now I lost my train of thought.
Water resources.
Well, this background, yeah.
Yeah, water resources. I was, I, you answered the question that you would be interested in. We have two openings and we don't have, two candidates dropped out, so-
Because are we full on economic development?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that was, that was something I had-
Hey, what about advisory, though? Do they have an opening on there?
Yes.
Don't they?
That's moderator.
I know, but still, are you familiar with advisory?
Somewhat.
So that's appointed by the moderator, not by us, but it still would be an opportunity. I think there is a position open there as well. And just to give you an idea of what that board is, it gives you the opportunity to represent, you know, constituents really in an objective evaluation of all the finances in town. So it's one of the boards that approves, you know, the budget and capital plan and any big projects. So that's a great way also to really understand how the town works. A lot of us didn't start there, but a lot of us served on that board. It's nice. It's a good view. I don't know if that's of interest.
Yes.
Okay. We'd like to find spots for everyone that comes forward, but, you know, especially someone like you who just came to town, you know, this is, we need, we need people like you. So, if we can get you in a spot that works well for you as well as works well for that particular committee, it's a win-win for everybody.
Okay.
Well said. Any other questions?
No.
Great. So we, we're going to vote later on tonight. There's one opening and two renewals that we have to discuss, and then it sounds like there were some other committees that you may be interested in as well.
Yep.
Not that you're not going to get this one, but in fact, I should have asked the first person if there was there, because like, there's openings, and when we get people in the room, we don't like to let them out before we get them on some-
He had a good resume.
The doors are locked now.
So, great, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer.
And that's it for interviews?
I think that's it. Was Gerald supposed to come in?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll see if he comes in a little later.
Are we early? Yeah.
No, we're-
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anybody else here for a position that I missed?
Ruth?
All right, then we will move on to the budgets.
I think he was, I think he graduated the year, like, I don't think they over, yeah. I was trying to do the math.
Thirteen? Do I have eleven or thirteen?
I think they were eleven.
Eleven, okay.
He graduated, so he might have been there a second year. Who needs weightlifting? Who needs weightlifting? I didn't think it was appropriate.
Tonight, anything goes.
Great. So, tonight we start our budget process. I think there's seven budgets that we're going to go over tonight. Pretty light lifting ones, thank you, Jim. And then I assume that there's an overview and some introductory comments.
Crowd here tonight.
I like the picture on the cover this year. It's looking at, oh, yeah, yeah, that's by the harbor master. I don't want to take anything out on.
How is the cover short cut?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh-oh. It's like we always do our budgets in the dark. So this is the first night for the FY21 operating capital budget. We're a little bit early from previous years, and it seems like we just did a town meeting to do FY20 stuff, which we did, but FY21 is going on concurrently. Nancy, we just finished closing out FY19, so, well, at one point we had three budgets going at the same time. Some of the highlights for the FY19 certified free cash, we had 2.5 million, just over that. General fund receipts and new growth are up. As you can see, new growth is up 335,000. That's all the work that Joe DeVito did that we talked about earlier. We continued a lot of capital funding, including roads, school technology, forshore, water and sewer. I think I told you last meeting, we finally got our first FEMA reimbursement back from previous storms, so we're working on that. Just as an aside, you would be stunned at the amount of paperwork and phone calls and conference calls and-
Not really.
That we need to do to get that money back. It is, it is mind-boggling. We maintained our AAA bond, AA plus bond rating. I did send you today. We just got reaffirmed by Standard and Poor's at AA plus.
Congratulations.
We also received the highest possible rating for our band of Standard and Poor's one plus. Strong economy, strong management, strong budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility, strong institutional framework scores, and very strong liquidity. The two main things that are holding us back from a AAA continue to be our pension liability and our OPEB liabilities, which we are addressing, but they are large liabilities and they will continue to be a drag on our credit until we do more for the OPEB, and I think we get a little bit further along on the Plymouth County. The Plymouth County, they believe, probably rightly so, that their funding schedule, their return on investment is probably still a little bit aggressive at this point. But, right now, we are on 2028 or 2029.
I think it's been down from there.
2029 is fully funded on pensions as of right now. So the plan would be, I believe, about ninety percent of our pension appropriation is for the unfunded pension liability. So the thought is, if those of us who are here in 2029, that you would then take that money that you're putting into the pension, just flip it right into your OPEB liability. But, again, that's 2029, we got a few more years before we get to that.
Ten years flies by fast.
New growth, again exceeded projections by 335. Local receipts, right now we are on par for FY19. We just awarded the money and the contract for the facilities study for the town buildings. The three million in water replacement will be going on, and we continue to make our forshore repairs and working with FEMA.
And we didn't pay our electricity bill. No, just kidding.
It goes faster if you can't see.
Keep reading. We'll get it.
So the additional growth, when we have the additional growth, when we set our tax rate, the additional growth and the last article, one of the last articles at Tom meeting, that money flows into our stabilization account. So, that will continue to grow at this point. Revenue assumptions, Prop two and a half by two and a half. Currently, state aid is level funded. December is the consensus revenue meeting, where the House, the Senate, the administration and business people, bankers and things, get together and meet and say, okay, we are projecting out for next year that revenue will grow by a certain percentage. From that, the governor's budget will fall out, and we'll get a local aid number. He usually gives us that at the MMA. So that'll be a little late getting in, but we can then factor that in when it comes up. These are revenue sources. As Mr. Denny pointed out today, the vast majority of our funding comes from local property tax. This is your average tax bill. You can see there's two areas where it kind of takes a leap. 2012, that was an operational override that town Situit passed for 2.2 million dollars. And then in 2016, you can see it takes another jump. That is when you started to see the middle school, the library, and the public safety building hitting the tax rate. Aside from that, it is a regular two and a half percent increase generally annually, but those are two big increases that were voted by the taxpayers of Situit. Local receipts trending up. FY18, FY19, and FY20, they've been fairly uniform. As we always do, we are conservative in our estimates. We remain that way. We will continue to remain that way, especially on local receipts, because they are very susceptible to any changes in the economy or any changes outside our control. So, we are still very conservative in that. Again, we will continue to be conservative in those estimates. Some of the challenges, our ongoing water infrastructure challenges, we could add to that our sewer infrastructure challenges. The new senior center, the bids are due now on Thursday. We'll see the general contractor bids, we'll get an idea what those are going to look like. The gym renovation and then the high school field complex, that is going very well at this point. We are happy with our contract. We're happy with what we're seeing. We are just about out of the ground, and once you get out of the ground, the stuff that you don't know is going to happen tends to go away. We did have a couple of change orders where when we put in the light poles, they hit refusal, which means they couldn't drill through, so they had to change the footing for those light towers. But again, once we're out of the ground, a lot of that uncertainty goes away. So we're getting to that point. Fixed costs, increased employee benefits, health insurance, life insurance, those keep going up. We have all five of our contracts expire at the end of this fiscal year, so we are starting that process going forward. Right now, we're in staff meetings going over what we think we should be looking for, for changes in those contracts, and then we will be probably starting this month or into December, January with the unions on that. We spent a lot of time on the storms, on the impacts. This, this past year was a good winter. The year before that was a bad winter. So it's kind of a crapshoot, but Kyle and Nancy and Sean McCarthy and Dan and a lot of our staff spent a real, John Murphy, spent an inordinate amount of time dealing with these FEMA reimbursements, trying to get all that money back. We do a very good job of getting what we're owed, but it is really, not only is it mind-boggling, it's mind-numbing. I know Nancy sometimes is on these calls for an hour, two hours, and I'm just like, oh my God, kill me now. The minutia is, again, more than you can possibly-
Well, to what end? Like, what do we, are we ever going to see it?
Yes. We are seeing money where our legacy projects are moving forward. We had a, Jim walked in on a pre-conference, a pre-FEMA MEMA meeting conference call, conference call. We had a one-hour conference call today to discuss the conference call tomorrow. As I said, it is mind-numbing and it's never-ending, and I've learned that I can only now speak in acronyms for most of the time. So if I couldn't speak before, it's only getting worse.
It's crazy. We do very well in our grant funding. We continue to apply for grants. We just got a notice of new grant opportunities today. Those went out. I'm sure the departments will be looking for those. But they are getting more and more competitive. We know now, all of a sudden, Boston has realized that the tide comes in and they could flood, so a lot of those grants that we've been competing for, the seawall and dam repair, now we have Boston, now we have Quincy that are getting to those in a, in a big way. So those are going to be even more competitive in the future. So, we'll have to keep paying those. But our staff really does a very good, a very, very good job.
Could I, could I ask a question about, um, green community? I sent you an email from someone I forwarded to you. Apparently, there was some misunderstanding about whether or not we were qualified for green community grants because we hadn't spent the entire amount. Do you remember that email?
We are, we are qualified green community. The last year, we didn't apply because we hadn't finished closing out some accounts.
Okay.
So we had finished closing out those accounts, which I believe we had, but they said, look, you need to finish spending and closing out what you have before you come back looking for more.
But now we'll be back in that cycle.
We should be back in the rotation and right back at it.
Thank you.
FY21 operating budget. Again, it's hard to believe it's FY21, level service, again, no free cash, no stabilization fund, no what we would consider one-time revenues balancing the FY21 budget. Local receipts and new growth, modest increases in those. Level funded, state aid and assessments. We do anticipate those will go up. We just, we really don't have an idea until that revenue meeting is, and also the uncertainty of the new school funding formula, what's that going to do. Generally, they try to make sure everybody's held harmless, but whether we will see significant increases in funding, they, they can't even tell you if you ask them. I mean, I think Karen's probably dealing with that. The House has one set of numbers, the Senate has another set of numbers, and the governor has a third set of numbers. So, we'll see what, what comes out. All the union contracts are up. We have estimated increases in the FY21 budget. I can tell you offline what those are, but we won't talk about it in public, but there are some increases built in, so we can fund those. The facilities budget carries some anticipated costs for the new senior center. We've put in about, a little less than half a year of funding for heat, electricity, and for increasing our maintenance and that. That's just given what we think the schedule will be. We might be a month early, a month late, but we'll be, we should be in the ballpark if everything goes according to plan of when that senior center is going to open. And then there'll be some savings from the current center that's, that's operating. I think later on, we will have to have a discussion on what we want to do with that building. I will be looking for authority at Tom meeting to sell that building, to dispose of it, get it off our books. If the board has a certain way they want to dispose of it or for certain use, we can discuss that. But I think we want to divulge ourselves, divest ourselves of that building, and I'd probably look to divest ourselves of the mine at Fire Station at the same time. And then those monies could be used either to go into savings or to offset some of the debt costs from the senior center. But we, those buildings, we just don't have a need for them for us to own and continue to maintain those.
Is that a commercial zone or a residential zone?
I would have to look.
Or like an overlay, they could do both? Okay.
I would have to look, because we're exempt from, municipality exempt from use. So we can put out buildings anywhere. But if we sell it, they would have to confirm, they would have to comply with whatever the use is, yeah. Operational maintenance support, forshore roads. Here's your fixed costs.
Let's go back to that one.
Go back.
So, this is the override money that we reduced last year.
It's at the fiscal twenty levels.
It's at the fiscal twenty levels, so we maintain it from last year.
So we didn't reduce it anymore from the-
Correct.
Okay.
For, for, around-
Make sure I didn't do that this year. These are your fixed costs, pensions, and these are all, we vet these all through and with the financial forecast committee. We go over these. The pension is probably a pretty good number, health insurance.
Well, we know the Medicare number came in after financial forecasts met, and it actually went down by one percent. And that's forty percent of our enrollment. So hopefully we'll have the same type of fortune when the active employee plans are renewed in February.
We picked up some money there last year that came in low. Do you remember, we're estimating that at right now?
We have it at a six, and we did three point one, it came in at three point one last year.
Those increases don't look as high as we've seen in some other years. Am I, am I mistaken? I mean, it looks a lot better.
Health insurance has been good.
And I haven't opened our book yet, because we haven't got that, but-
Pensions, generally we project on eight percent for pensions.
Right. And if you, if you sum that up, you're around seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, and if you think your two and a half percent's around one point four to one point five, you just took half of your two and a half percent limit for these few budgets.
Yes, but we, you guys have done great on those two line items. Changing the plans for both of them have leveled us out as opposed to the spikes I think you're referring to there.
Yeah, we've been good. We, we've had a meeting on our health insurance. Our experience has been good so far, because we're rated, even though we're in a pool, we're still rated individually. But it's, it's been fairly good, so I, I hate to say I'm not anticipating a real large increase. There will be an increase, but I think the six percent that we have factored in should cover that, and then we're hoping to do better than that. But there have been years since I've been doing this where you've seen double-digit increases in health insurance. When I was in the Mayflower Group, we had several years of zeros, and we would always budget an increase, so we'd continue to build that line, and then sometimes didn't, and all of a sudden it went from zero to twelve to fourteen. So, again, we're trying to be very conservative. We pick up some money there, we pick up some money then, and that gets distributed to the formula that we have with the school department. Regional school assessment, again, we're projecting that up. I think that's two students, or is it one student and a-
Norfolk Aggie, one student and then social regional.
And the debt is, just the general fund budget?
Yeah, it's the debt exclusion that's declining, not the, the regular non-debt exclusion.
Liability insurance, that's up. We have new buildings that'll, that'll continue to go up, and the liability, it just, insurance keeps going up. Maintains level service, reflects the operational costs for our new facilities, we're starting to get a handle on those and what those are, what the operating cost of the police station is, the public safety building. We are still carrying, the old gates are still costing us about a hundred thousand dollars a year. We are trying to get a handle on how much of that is recreation, because then we can charge that to the recreation department. So we'll kind of shift that onto them, because they're the ones using the building. We just haven't been able to really, with Kevin being out, we really haven't been able to nail down in a, in a way that Nancy and I are comfortable saying, here's your portion of it, what that costs, because we do still heat the B-wing, keep that operating. We continue road and forshore improvement. Major commitments to our water and sewer infrastructure, particularly water. We continue our coastal resource officer, and again, we pursue all the grants that we possibly can, and our staff is, is very, very good at that. Capital plan, we have 13.3 million in forshore repairs and improvements that I have recommended in there. roadway and chapter ninety, building repairs, the schools are getting significant monies for repairs, particularly a project to do the locker rooms at the high school. I believe that's just under eight hundred thousand dollars for repairs at the high school. Also, we're going to remove and repair, remove Wapatac, remove, right, or replace.
The portico?
Yeah.
I thought it was replace.
Replace the portico at the Wapatac School. That's really a danger of falling down. Those are two big ones at the- Replace the portico at the Wapatack School. That's really a danger of falling down. Those are two big ones at the schools. We are continuing for the fire station in Wapatack to plan for that. New ambulance, new DPW vehicles.
Fire station.
What did I say?
Wapatack.
Wapatack.
We might need a station in Wapatack. And the ambulance is being replaced this year.
Oh, really?
Yep. We, we put money into capital stabilization last year for that. That's coming out, and then the balance. So we'll have a new ambulance this year. Again, several DPW vehicles, like two vehicles for the facilities department. Right now, we have an old truck that's just falling apart. So we're gonna replace a couple of vehicles in there, too. Continuing with the capital, $16.3 million recommended. Sewer, water transfer station, all large, the water department, there's a couple of big pipe replacement projects. We're doing some work on the Hammer Rock to get that started. I think you have the capital plan. I won't go through it, because we'll spend a lot of time going through that. But again, significant investments in our infrastructure, the waterways. We are looking for a grant to replace all the docks. We have money in the fund for what our portion would be. Included in that, the recreation department has a couple of docks that they need replaced. So we told the waterways, make sure if you're doing 100 docks, do 103, so we could do those, get reimbursement, and then we'll cover that on our recreation. So they were amenable to that. Capital budget has already had one meeting, and I think they're having their second one tomorrow.
Before you go on the sewer, how does the Cedar Point financing factor into this?
Does not at this point, because we don't have a number.
Okay.
We don't have a number, but we've already appropriated 2.5 million, authorized 2.5 million.
Right.
We have the $2.2 million grant, and the discussion with the board was anything over and above that is gonna be a benefit. So, but it is not.
So the.
The additional, the 2.5 might be in there, but the additional cost is not.
So the, so this, these funds for infrastructure improvement are for other identified INI?
A big one is Oceanside.
For the pipe there, okay.
I think Will has looked at that, and they're recommending a lining of that. They believe that can be lined, because that's a much larger.
A force main, yeah.
Force main pipe, so to replace it would be hugely difficult and expensive. They think they can line that. One of the issues at Cedar Point is the way the laterals go in, what they call chimney laterals. And I guess those are almost impossible to line and keep them, keep them going because of the depth. So right now, the recommendation for Oceanside is going to be lining.
Thank you.
Right now, we have a list of about 31 articles. I didn't bring it. I didn't want to overwhelm you. We continue to go through it. And Nancy and I keep saying, put this on, put this on, put this on, put this on.
How many are zoning?
I only have two on there now, but there's a whole bunch of general bylaw stuff that are like housekeeping stuff. Like the election date for CAFE. Dog, having dog licenses for over age 70 that are, don't cost a person anything. You know, nothing that's horrible, that a lot of them might end up in the consent agenda if they can move forward.
I just tried to do the whole thing as a consent agenda.
Sounds good.
I was thinking we're moving that way.
One more, two nights.
Yeah.
Well, again, there's, there's not a lot on there right now that I would look at and say, oof, that's gonna be, there's, there's gonna be some stuff coming, but as Nancy said, a lot of it is, a lot of the routine stuff that's gonna go back to the consent agenda. Just give me this look like, don't say that. You're just jinxing yourself.
It's November, November 19.
So continuing obligations, our water and sewer issues, the sewer in North Situate. Again, I, I think we finally get some positive moving forward news on that. Now, the next big thing is gonna be what the engineers tell us it's gonna cost to, to do that. It should be less than the large project. You know, some of the questions we'll have, what areas we're gonna do. We planned a couple of areas, the areas that we are doing. You know, and speaking to Will, hopefully when we do the upgrades and fix our plan and do the INI, that maybe those could come back to our plan, because they're not that large in terms of flow, nor do they have a large development possibility. So when we're talking about sending flows to Cohasset and Hull, we are planning on the build-out flows. So what we can build in North Situate based on zoning, how much would that be? So one of the questions would be the 40B on Route 3A. Would they be able to connect in? How would they connect in? And of course, they'd have to pay for it, that sewer. So that actually is factored in right now, that that would go to Cohasset and Hull.
That's factored in?
Yes, the flow.
With the full build-out?
Factored in in North Situate, the build-out, yeah.
Okay.
It's in that group. So, and then the west side is not on the sewer plant, basically at all.
Well, let's, let's go back. We haven't given them that, so.
No.
It's just in the numbers, so that.
Just in the number for planning purposes.
Calculations. Right, no, in my mind, that, however that conversation turns out, that's better to have a larger capacity built in, because we could always use it somewhere else.
Going with the assumption that, that, you know, the town transferred land to make that possible, so the town obviously has some sort of support for that project. It would be better for the neighbors and the residents if they were in a sewerage type of system than if they had a clear cut the entire lot, they put in a, they were on treatment pad. Ground one at discharge, it just takes up a lot more property.
Clear cut, I don't, I don't even want to go down that path.
We'll discuss that.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, we're just factoring, this is, here's the maximum amount we can send there.
Because whether it goes down Hollis Street, it goes down the train tracks, we'll have stuff to send.
Yes, right.
But no one's getting dropped off because of that?
No.
No, just checking.
No, that'll be added capacity that we'll be, we'll be doing. These are all, you're aware of, pensions, insurance, OPEB. We do have our new OPEB evaluation. It's in draft form. We're reviewing it. We will stun you with that at a later meeting, maybe right before Christmas, and you can ponder it over the Christmas vacation, but it is up again.
So fun.
We have aging buildings, we have aging infrastructure, and we need to try to keep up with those. So those will be continuing issues as we go forward. I think that's it.
That is it. And I did fix the, you saw me take the slide down and fix it, because we had a grants that were scare grants rather than scarce grants. They are scary, and they're scarce.
Great, well, it looks like a, kind of a, not devastating, but a tough year. Not, you know, we've got two or three major projects that we've got to keep forging forward on with the water and sewer and the maintenance of the buildings, and, you know, it looks like.
Yeah, and we had.
There won't be a lot of increases to staff or anything like that.
You know, I mean, I'm doing these off the top. I accidentally wrote them down, but I think when we got through everything, we had just over $500,000 in, in additional funds available for the town departments. And over $100,000 of that was taken up by technology and the town clerk's office. The technology is, we had the capital last time. This is now the ongoing licensing cost, so we gotta build it in. Once it's in, it won't go up, $70,000, $80,000 a year, but we gotta put it in. And then next year is the presidential year. There's two or three more elections. So the town clerk's budget's up around $30,000, $30,000 plus. So just from those two budgets, we take about 20% of our available funding for the entire, I don't wanna say discretionary, but, you know, the discretionary side of the town budget, and then we're gonna make the rest of it fit. So you'll see when you go through the budgets, you know, departments didn't get what they were looking for for the most part. They all took some sort of shave. And when we get the numbers, when we adjust them, we'll go back through and say, okay, this is an area where we think we need to put some money back. This is an area we need to put some money back. But we, we took from where we think we could, and we discussed it with most of the department heads, you know, you're taking a lot. You know, the feedback was, all right, you know, we didn't get any, can't live without that, so.
Good. So we're gonna go through the actual individual budgets?
We have a couple, yep.
Before we do that, I just have to ask you, are you here for a Walt, wine and malt license?
No, I'm here for the matter and executive discussion.
Okay, so you have to wait. All right, so the first one is admin and board of selectmen, budget number 123.
Yeah, the admin and board of selectmen budget, you'll be pleased to know, is actually down from the amended budget in town meeting.
Do we fire someone?
Give us one second.
Wait, what are we on? Is it consolidated?
So just so we get, it looks a little different, although, and I like it. So 18, 19 actuals, 20 original budget, special town meeting, and then the requests, and then what you're recommending. So on this one, you're recommending this 699477?
Oh, your bottom line, yeah, okay.
Yes.
And then that's different from the requests by $65,000, which is predominantly in the.
A lot of it's in contract bargaining.
Contract bargaining, yeah.
And.
Legal.
Little bit in legal.
Yeah, legal and the special projects director, which $17,000 was in our budget. And that was Al Bangert. He's basically said, look, I'm finishing up the projects I got, and I'm, I'm done. So, you know, hopefully, he's working right now on the windmill. It's back up and running, so we're just looking for the right conditions to do the final test. But that's really the last big project that I think Al's working on, besides, he just keeps track of all the solar stuff, because he likes.
Is that contract, is that other services? Is he in there?
Part-time salaries.
Salaries.
That didn't go down.
Part-time salaries went down by about $17,000.
Not other salaries, part-time salaries, not the town.
Oh, from last year?
Yep.
Okay, yep. So last year's budget was 773. They came in with 764, and it's kind of, what you're recommending is 699, which is reduced $5,000 from legal, $60,000 from contract bargaining from their requests. Any questions on this budget?
Yeah, I just have a question about the, the legal budget. When CPC uses legal services, does the town, town charge back to CPC?
Hey, direct.
They just charge their.
So this would not include, okay.
They have a separate bill, and we just hand it to them.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So we spent a lot of time and a lot of money this year on the Ellis.
Right.
Issue, getting that all ready. It's pending before the legislature, so we should be winding down on that, so we shouldn't see that kind of need going forward. That should just, you know, where we should wrap that up this, this fiscal year.
Will that be able to go into the, the land trust that is holding the conservation restrictions for all the other CPC properties?
I forget who we're dealing with, do you remember, Nance? But we have a land trust that's.
Right, and we have funds appropriated for it.
To do it, yeah. I can't remember the name of the, the name of the trust.
The Wildlands Trust.
Yeah, maybe the Wildland Trust, and they've come out, they met with.
They're very good.
Now, and they've, yeah, we'll be able to get that done.
Good.
Okay, let's move on to the next one.
Advisory Committee is up $236.
Give us a second, I'll flip the pages. So just from the numbers, $6,748 last year, $6,984 this year.
Let's just step in and estimate a call for the reporting secretary.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
All right, reserve fund.
Reserve fund is level funded. There is no change this year.
So it used to be 90 years ago, and then we dropped it to 75, and it's staying at 75.
$17,000, and that was for a general liability and property insurance transfer.
So the advisory committee has control of this fund.
Yes, so they only did one transfer last year.
And is that year-end? We just used it from there?
No, it was during the year. Because the insurance budget tends to go quickly, because you pay the premiums upfront, and we took a lot of unexpected hits.
Any questions on that one?
Nope.
All right, 192.
192, general liability and property insurance, as we showed on the screen, it's an increase of $37,152. It's a 5% projected increase at this point. We don't have the actual numbers yet.
We don't have them probably until March.
So it's on the back of the page, right before police. Last year, two years ago, 709, last year, 743, this year, 780. That's thousands of dollars, and that's just because of new buildings and.
And just the cost of insurance going up, yeah.
Any questions on that?
Nope.
I am doing a great job. 424 streetlights.
Had a good and bad year last year. Yeah, four was a bad year, vehicle wise.
That was bad.
So last year, we did 128 was the actual. We budgeted 120 last year, and we're budgeting 120 this year. I thought that was gonna go down.
Both do.
It's not gonna go any lower than this. If anything, this is barely making it when you get into the repairs.
Any questions on this one?
This is just for the repairs?
No, this is just for the electricity. When we start getting into repairs, it starts getting to be problematic. I had that discussion with Al today. He said the same thing to me. He's like, we never did get down to 60 like we thought we would. I'm like, no.
I thought when we were changing the light bulbs, it was gonna.
We thought, the thought was that you would no longer be paying rental, plus the savings from going from, to LED would get you even lower, but it, so far, this is as low as we go. Plus, we picked up some new streets. Like we picked up streets we didn't know we already owned, and then we picked up a few more.
What were we at before 2018? Were we up?
In excess of $200,000.
Okay.
So, I mean, there was savings.
Yep.
So.
Sounds, but I think the magnitude that the town expected.
We spent $600,000 overall. I think it was $100,000 to buy them, and $600,000 converted.
That, too, there, right?
As much as we can afford. Insurance.
So when your light bulb, when your streetlight goes out, you call the town now?
Yeah, and it goes on a list.
And we have a contract with someone to then come out, and we have, they have an emergency provision, but otherwise, they just come into a thing like the blinking one we have right now.
So we, we try to get a critical mass that they come onto, but it's just happened to come onto a couple.
So if you're on a street with six houses, what's critical mass?
No, more, more critical mass, if, if I have a light out, I don't call the company to come and fix a light.
I see.
I wait till we have.
A bunch.
A bunch of lights out, and then I'm committed.
The same company does our traffic lights.
Thought I was gonna be in the dark at some point.
Then how's the program work if you wanted a light in front of your house? You could pay for that, have it on a separate bill. Is that still in existence?
That's for National Grid. I don't know how that would work with us, where we now own the lights.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And let's not please ever have that discussion, because I don't want to begin to think about how that would have to work.
That really came up, Sean, years ago, when towns were shutting off lights to save money and something like that. Don't shut off my lights, so you can, you can pay for it yourself.
Right.
And they would meter that light for the individual person. And 10 years later, they come back, say, do you want to pay for it now? And the town say, no, we're good. Thanks, you want, you still pay for it, but.
Did you just do a mass, you must have just installed, do we install them too, right? The replaceables, the bulbs, like when the lights go out?
We have a, a contract with someone.
That doesn't, yeah, they must have just done a bunch, because West End is lit up again.
And we'd never do that in else without bucket truck. All right.
But how do people report lights?
They call the office, or there's a place on the website.
There is a spot on the website?
Okay.
Any more discussion? We all set, moving on?
Works compensation, level funded.
One sec, 912, right?
Yes.
Tony's gonna ask me questions, and I need to know the answers, so. Just say 48, 4.8 to 5.3? No, we went from 4.8 to 4.9 to 5.3. No. Oh, it's getting late.
Zero.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
210 forever.
Thank you. I was doing so, I wanted to make you so proud of me.
Can you get by? Sorry. I know you came the wrong way.
Any questions? All right, 913.
Level funded.
Good job.
Great. That does it, huh?
1913, if you want to finish it up, or let.
Level funded. Yeah, these are, Jim was nice tonight. These are the relatively.
Layups.
Easy and really not a lot of flexibility.
Yeah, exactly.
Please let me know what you think of these sheets. This is something different this year, I tried.
The only thing I would add is you give the percentage difference on the right, but if you could put the dollar difference, can't do that.
Did you, well, did you notice the size of Jim's teacher's edition?
Yes.
Just because I can't see.
Well, but I mean, I was trying to. Well, but I mean, I was trying to...
Oh, so you did it for him, but not us?
Well, he's got the teacher's edition. It's not in a book.
I got a cheat.
I think next year, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have that STM revised column, so we could stick it there.
Yeah.
Or you can take one of the actuals off.
I like having two years with the actuals, though, in case you have, like, a bump year, like with a Riley storm or something.
I like two years.
It skews it.
Well, you could get rid of the Boston, I mean, excuse me.
You don't get you other columns.
I, I didn't like what was coming off the system, you just, the description is truncated. It is, it's a dump out from Eunice, but when you dump it out into Excel, you just get more detail. Yeah. Okay.
Great. All right, so we'll expect every meeting for the...
Now, I don't know somebody...
Forever.
Three or four of these.
Stuff are probably...
Thank you for getting it done earlier, that's great.
This is early.
Yeah.
This time last year, Jim was just having his meetings with departments.
Yeah. So this is great.
So Nancy just kept... We got it done. I said she got most of it done. I just gave her the recommendations, but we've got the department, Nancy, they were very good, they got them done. They're just done early, I mean, it is very early, it tends to make, because our revenue, state aid numbers are, are just level funded, so this is probably a little more draconian than it would normally be in the end, but I don't see huge amounts of additional funds coming in, and we get a third of them, so it's not going to be like we're going to have a huge windfall, and all of a sudden, we're just going to have, yay, do all these things.
And it's nice not to be doing any of this in the holiday season.
But we will be able to restore some of these, some of the, some of the reductions, we'll be able to restore some of them, but for the most part, they're going to have to live with it. The, I don't want to talk too long, but the enterprise funds, some of them were actually very good this year. All of them were better this year. We still did have to make some reductions, particularly in sewer and waterways.
Sewer, waterways, and water, but the water and waterways weren't big deals, sewer was...
Sewer is still...
Well, I'm sure I speak for everybody up here. We're really glad that this continues to focus on water and sewer, and, you know, getting the projects done. And that's really what we need to do for the next couple of years at least, until we see the results of all this stuff.
Yeah, and again, we, we've seen that manganese detection, that's very good. We think that's a very good indicator. That three million dollars on those old pipes, it's not just the pipes, though. We also talked about there'll be additional hydrants and flushing gates on some of those areas that just we can't flush. Uh, you know, we had, we had one woman, we met with her, there's two houses on her street. It's a one and a half inch line at her house and her daughter's house, and we have no way... First of all, it's a private line, and there's no way for us to flush it. There's no hydrant, there's no, nothing. So we're going to pull the meter and try to flush it through her line, but, you know, we're looking at it going, "Ooh, we don't have a whole lot of options here." So a lot of those problems that we have now, we can put in hydrants, we can put in flushing gates, and attack some of those dead ends that are going to be problematic no matter what, until we give ourselves a way to flush them.
Just think it's worth saying, Jim, so those people on the dead-end streets, how do they get flushed? Without taking their meter off?
Well, some of them, we've put in flushing gates this year.
But, but before this?
Before, there was, there was no way to flush it.
Open up their faucet, that's how they flush it, so...
Right, so what we try to do now is we, we take their meter off, so that it's not going through their meter, and then we try to flush that whole end of the line through someone's residential connection, and try to, try to draw it all out, and, you know, those are one-inch lines, they really don't do a very good job, but... We try it, it's something we can try, to, to pull it off and give that street, or that end of the street...
It's a relief.
At least something, but, uh, you know, and the whole flushing program, again, I don't want to spend a lot of time with the whole flushing, flushing program, they're going into areas, they're finding gates that, um, they didn't know they had. They're finding gates that were shut, and those gates might have been shut fifteen years ago, because that guy had brown water, and so they changed the flow of the water, closed that gate, and then there was no record of the gate being closed, and now the people over there are getting brown water, and they can't figure out why they're getting brown water. So, uh, we're getting all those gates fixed, we're getting all exercised, we're getting all the hydrants exercised, so the entire shape of the water system will be better, we have a better knowledge of it. All these hydrants are getting exercised, so if there's a fire, you know, we've had the hydrants, we've turned them on. If they're broken, we fix them. So we're, we're getting a lot of other benefits from just flushing the system at this point with this, this program, so...
Thanks. All right, so we've got a few more things, and then we're going to go into executive session. The first one is a discussion vote on one-day wine and malt license for the River Shad. Anyone have any questions on that? Is that a motion?
Move that the Board of Selecting approve a one-day wine and malt license to River Shad for an event at the KAR Hall, three fifty-three Country Way, December eighth, two thousand and nineteen, from four to eight P.M.
Second. Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
That's for a fundraiser for the Citrus Food Pantry, so that's nice. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, so now we have appointments. And let's start with, well, we did the Affordable Housing Trust, and we did Recreation. Why don't we go over to Conservation?
Do we know anything about Gerald, why he didn't show? Lorraine, could he not make it this evening, do you know?
Gerald?
Gerald Palumbo?
I prefer him for the season, I do not know why.
Okay.
So this is, um, number twelve, which, uh, Conservation is twelve. So on this one, we have two renewals and one opening. I would say, I mean, if these other people want to apply, um, we can consider that later, but there is one opening, and there's a couple of good candidates. So I would, um, suggest we try and fill some of it.
Well, I'll make a motion for Mr. Gallagher. I think, um, he was obviously a great candidate. You know, in my mind, we've got three openings, right? Like you said, two renewals, one...
Yep.
One vacant.
One vacancy and two renewals.
Yeah.
And both the renewals have served past, just the, the, I don't know if it's a policy or a guide... A guideline is two terms of six years, and then you kind of stay on until they, until you find a replacement for somebody. And sometimes that gets prolonged, and sometimes it doesn't. So, um, so you want to make a motion for the open spot?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Andrew Gallagher to the, um, opening on the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
All right. Move to appoint, sorry, Andrew Gallagher, it's late, um, to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want to hold off on the renewals?
No.
No, all right.
I would like to move to reappoint Penny Scott Pipes to the Conservation Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days. If I may just say, in support of this motion, um, I've had the privilege of working with Penny over a number of years on the CPC, and she's been invaluable. And, um, you know, I know she's served for a long time, but it is a committee where experience is very valuable. So that is why I am moving to reappoint Penny.
I'll second that. Okay, so we have, uh, second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? I think we've said what we had to say. These are kind of optional positions in the, in the extra years of the term, and it's really whatever the board feels, so... That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed, none, so it's five to zero, unanimous. I would like to see if these other people come in. I don't know if you guys are opposed to holding off on the other renewal another week, or do you want to...
I'd like to see Gerald, I know, I feel, I'm the only one. Let's see, I just feel badly...
Well, we have the other two.
Yeah.
We had Brendan and Spencer as well. So do you want to hold off on that for another?
Yeah, is it, was it the other world? Was, if we held off till next meeting?
We can do whatever we want.
Can we wait and give Gerald an opportunity to come one more time, or...
I'll ask him again.
Or do you think, has he already been asked twice? I'm just trying to get a gauge, if he's not going to show up, that's fine, then I'll...
I've been on vacation, so I'm not sure what we should have him, but before I went on vacation, I preferred to...
So we're going to wait on, we're going to wait on this one, one more meeting...
Okay.
And go on to the next one. Um, Beautification, didn't we already do that?
This is an additional person who has applied. They have openings.
Okay. Did, uh, have we met that person?
She's been on the Historic Commission. She resides in the Historic Commission this year. She's interested in...
All right. Move to appoint Karen Desler to the Beautification Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days. Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, how about the Historic Commission?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, why is Doug Smith being reappointed for one year?
He only wants to be reappointed for one year.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So be specifically asked.
Okay, thank you.
So, let's, hold on for one second, let me get to that page. So Historic is sixteen.
Eleven.
Historic is...
I have CPC after eleven. Yeah, what is it, sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen. Okay. So on this one, there are two openings, three renewals, and one applicant. Did, uh, Mr. Brand come in?
Yes.
He did, that's right.
Yes, he did.
That's right.
He's been a couple of times, he's very interested.
Yeah.
And he does a lot of work for the historical society.
I will move to appoint Bob Brand to the Historic Commission for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, five to zero. Can we get a renewal for Doug Smith for one year?
I move to reappoint Doug Smith, uh, to the Historical Commission for a term of one year and or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we have more openings there. Oh, and we have two other renewals.
Two reappointments.
Yeah, two renewals. I'll move to reappoint Aubrey Schwartz to the Historic Commission for a term of one year... Oh, wait, for a term of three years, sorry. Or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, five to zero.
Move to reappoint Arthur Beal to the Historic Commission as an associate non-voting member for a term of three years or until...
Do we want to... Does he only want to be an associate?
He does not want to be, yes, he only wants to remain an associate.
Sorry for interrupting.
It's okay. Member for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
So we have one, and Lorraine, I know this is, I know you've done this a hundred times. Can we just post these on the website and on Facebook, that we have an opening on, one opening on Historic, again?
Sure.
Just to see if somebody...
Yeah.
Because, otherwise...
Well, it'll show, won't it show on the updated board page that there's one opening?
I think if you put it on Facebook, it'll at least...
Oh, at least get some interest, got it.
I mean, okay.
Unless you have, well...
I'll find it out in the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I mean...
I'm happy to do that, again.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just have to keep...
It's just a never-ending...
It's what it is.
Process.
Otherwise, we're never going to have anyone on it. Right? I mean, unless there's another idea to get somebody on here.
That's not the only opening, is it?
No, no, there'll be others as well, I assume.
It's a change in policy of what we've done in the past, so that's a resource issue.
Oh, then.
Okay. ZBA?
Traffic rules.
Traffic rules?
Move to reappoint Al Banger, Sean McCarthy, Captain Williams, Sostito, Dorothy Corcan tail, Billings to the Traffic Rules and Regulations for a term of one year until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield, further discussion?
I just have to say, this group does a really great job, and, you know, I'm surprised no one else has raised their hand to, to, to do it, but it's an effective group. So kudos to Traffic Rules and regs.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five plus to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we have, what else is on the show?
Zoning.
Zoning, yes.
How many openings do we have?
Hold on, I'll take a five.
Twenty-six, okay.
Couple renewals, still, so one alternate opening, two renewals.
So I'll make a motion to appoint...
Hold on, can you wait? Can I just look at it for one second?
We have one opening and two renewals.
Which makes it three openings, correct?
Yep.
I get confused sometimes by that.
Yes, you can do, yes.
There's really three.
Right, positions that are available. That's really the way it should be.
Right.
Okay, hold on.
George says he's applied for this position June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. He's come in twice to the interview.
Yep.
I didn't have him to interview him this year, but...
Right.
But he's still interested.
Yes, and then Robbie Burgess has come for our committee.
They came in, yes.
Yeah, he was, he was actually very strong. It should be tough, it should be good.
Robbie Burgess is also interested in CPC, which is a big authority for him, and Coastal Advisor, which I'm hoping to bring to the next meeting.
All right, so there's... So there's three, and then Brian Sullivan is the first alternate, and then the second alternate is available.
Yes, John Howell resigned, Anthony Bucherri moved up.
So is there? I'm just talking out loud now. Is, what, can you take one of the renewals and make them the alternate and move somebody, the alternate up to be?
Oh, right, that's that whole alternate thing.
Oh, yeah, I think the alternate is there for the purposes of the learning curve.
Yeah.
Well, Brian Sullivan does not need the learning curve, but that's regardless.
Maybe that's all they want to serve on.
No, I think.
I just, I just wonder if somebody puts time in as an alternate. Do they ever get to play in the show?
Yeah, I mean, Anthony Bucherri was an alternate, and now is the chairman.
Right, but those two people are up for renewal, so there won't be another opportunity for an alternate, be it Brian or whoever else we put in there to be.
Right, I mean, we've had, yes, I do, because we've had trouble with people even coming to apply, and right now, you know, I know Ed's served for years, and I think he keeps serving because he's interested in serving, but I'm sure if someone else came up, like, I think he does it for the, sort of the town, because nobody's really been coming forward. It's been a while to find anybody for his own, right?
Could we ask him how he feels, because I, I think experiences.
The feedback that the two of them gave me, Anthony and Ed Tibbetts, is that they absolutely want to continue.
But would they serve, and this is just me talking right now, would one of them serve as an alternate if we wanted to move Brian up to a, and I'm talking to you guys.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I guess that's my question, and maybe Brian doesn't care being the alternate, and the alternates sometimes are very active.
Well, if Brian's not up for renewal, and not that he has to be probably, he could just get moved up.
But you raise a point, I mean, that would kind of mess up the whole thing. Like, maybe in twenty twenty-one, you consider that.
Right, and maybe, well, maybe Ed and Anthony don't want to be the alternate either.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
I think to Lorraine's point that, I think it'd be hard to take someone that experienced and put them in the alternate room.
Right. So.
Yeah, I mean, in this case, Brian has served on it for years and years before, so it's not that, but.
Right, but he's up twenty-one, twenty-one, as is Tom Kavanaugh.
I'll tell you what, I think George would be a great alternate to start learning. I'll make a motion to put George, nominate George Zixis. As the second alternate.
Sounding Board of Appeals, second alternate opening, yeah.
To the zoning board appeals, alternate opening for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days, so moved.
Second, sorry, didn't mean to say it that low. I'm looking at his, he's got an extensive law background. I do remember him coming in.
Yeah.
I do remember him coming in last year.
Yeah, he was a strong candidate.
He was a very strong candidate.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have two other candidates for the two, potentially the two renewal positions.
I'd like to.
Which then would move them to an alternate, and I would assume Brian up if we chose to.
I don't know if I'd shuffle a deck like that.
Well, if you want to make a motion for one of the two that are already there, then.
How about move to appoint, reappoint Ed Tibbetts and Anthony Bucherri to the ZBA for a term of three years?
You know what, I'd like to do them one at a time in case somebody else has.
All right.
Other meetings, or, or we can just talk about it. You know, Karen's a very competent person.
Oh, okay.
And Robbie.
Burgess.
Yep, so, but these two are good too, so I'm, I don't have a problem with your motion, I just.
All right, okay, I'll just, I'll, let me start along. Move to reappoint Ed Tibbetts to the ZBA for a term of three years or until a successor is named and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? It's unanimous, five to zero. And then the last one is.
May I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Is that the board constructed by statute? Because it's very confusing how there's alternates and.
Yeah.
It is.
I, I'd like to see if it's not a statutory requirement, if we could, that, that there's this, alternates and alternate positions open up and.
Well, it's a board of five, and it is.
Yeah, you have to have people sitting there, so.
Yeah.
You have to make a certain percentage of the meetings.
Well, you have to have alternates if someone can't be there, if someone has a conflict.
Right. I understand the concept of alternates. What I don't understand is that if we wanted to appoint someone, if we didn't want to reappoint one of the regular members, would we then be replacing that regular member with someone off of a list that we've got, or does the alternate, do they move up automatically?
For instance, if you wanted to nominate Robbie for Anthony, we would have Brian be the permanent, and we can make him the alternate. I believe you, I believe.
See, that's what I find confusing.
The fact that you want to make someone a member, you don't have to promote an alternate, you can just make.
A new member.
New member.
But you can promote an alternate.
You can promote an alternate also, yeah.
That's sort of where we're going.
Do we do that, or does the board do that? Does the ZBA do that?
They do their own.
Right, so maybe we don't.
They doing their own alternates?
No.
They, they move the alternates up themselves.
Do they?
Yes.
This is confusing.
They've been in the past. I mean, for example, John Howell resigned, and Anthony Bucherri was an alternate. He moved up to become the chairman.
And we didn't.
The chairman for the last six.
Can they do that, Jim? I never, I always remember.
We didn't appoint them.
It should be the appointing authority that makes.
Yeah, I always remember being specific.
I mean, I don't recall you appointing Anthony Bucherri as chairman.
We wouldn't have appointed him.
Well, we were.
We would appoint him to the actual, to one of the three.
To the full, full position, yeah.
Why don't we hold off on this till next week and talk to them and see what's, what's going on, and try and get some clarification on that? Does that make sense?
So we're holding off on Anthony Bucherri?
Yes. Yep. The other two have been made and passed, and.
Yeah, I actually think that that is improper to.
For them to do it.
For them to elevate, I think that's.
An alternate.
Decision, and they're entitled to pick their chair, but it's not proper?
We'll find out.
I don't think so.
He's shaking his head. He knows his stuff.
I could be wrong, it's late, but.
And the last one is water resource.
Oh.
Um, we had two people withdraw from that, so I think we're. We're still looking for members there.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to say that if Mr. Palumbo comes to interview for the conservation position that he didn't come for tonight, that we would still have two potentially good candidates for water resources.
I agree.
You know, express an interest tonight, so I find, I think that's good news.
I do too.
Yes.
Spencer and, and.
Brendan.
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 So we'll get those cleared up when we get the other one cleared up.
So we'll hold off on that as well.
And if, if, if he doesn't come in again, that's the answer we have from him.
Then we go right, yeah, yeah. Okay. So, Lorraine, I'll get in touch with you tomorrow, and we'll figure out all this, what's still we have to do.
Mixing.
Okay. So at this point in time, the next item is to go to executive session. And I have to leave.
And we're going to leave, right, Tony, do you want to?
So the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the government body to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. The board will reconvene in open session after we meet in executive session. And this. The, the topic of discussion is Murphy litigation strategy discussion.
Would you like a motion?
Please.
I move the Board of Selectmen go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty, Section A, oh, no, C thirty, A, Section twenty-one, three, for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to the Murphy Hadley Road fence litigation, because an, an open session discussion would have a detrimental effect on the board's position with regard to the same.
Sir.
For a roll call, as required. Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
All right, so we'll move into executive session.
We'll go back into regular.
Ten oh two PM.
Wait, at ten oh two. So what we're going to do is we're going to leave the room, because we don't want the recording to stop, and then we'll be back in a couple of minutes, and we'll wrap up the two, couple of meetings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Canfield. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to do a roll call.
Okay.
Vignani?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we, we're just in executive session, talking about a document, a contract, and we've discussed it, and I think there's, someone wants to make a motion with a few changes to it.
Yeah, I think the board just needs to approve the settlement agreement with the addition of fence and posts, and the date that the fence will be removed by December second, twenty nineteen. And we'll have council make those changes. We'll execute it and send it to the attorney for the homeowner, who is here. Those changes are agreeable.
Okay.
Motion as stated by Town Administrator?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Further discussion? Just to clarify, so the language will be the entire fence structure, including posts?
Fence and posts, yeah.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Great. Okay. Did you have any, all right. Thank you.
You too.
Moving, hold on, let me find my agenda. Okay, so we've done that, we've done that. Reaisond reports. Does anyone have any of those? Any?
Reaisond.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I say it to?
What did you say?
Did I say it French? Reaisond.
Yeah, just one bit of good news, the CPC match is two hundred and forty-four thousand, but it's probably not all of it, but there's some stuff going on at the State House that's confusing the matter. So, it's, it's not a huge amount, but it's better than we would get in a bank account.
Correct, what was it, pretend?
Yes.
Four, fourteen percent match or something like that. It's gone down significantly, but Boston got added to the mix this year, which makes a huge difference, because they contributed a ton of money in their real estate transaction registry money, and didn't take anything out until this past year. So this past year, they adopted it, so it's, it's, that's a significant hit.
Yeah.
But.
It slowly declined. I remember the first year we did it, we got a hundred percent, and we got a bonus, like, twenty on top of it, because they went back and said, who gives three percent, and they, they bonuses, so. Any?
No, not since the last.
No, not this week.
One quick thing, on Thursday at seven o'clock, in the library, will be the planning departments doing the North Situate zoning public meeting, to talk about that, similar to what they did when they were introducing the concept of the green bush overlay. So they're beginning that conversation this Thursday at seven o'clock.
Great. We had a sister city meeting where both the Souchon Brie and the West Cork groups got together and talked about what they'd done and what they're trying to do next year, so it was very productive. It's, you know, they're just, just really thriving in terms of getting the groups together and trying to proceed there, so that was a good meeting. I do want to make everyone aware of, there is a shellfish meeting tomorrow evening in Cohasset to talk about the collaboration between the two towns in the project that we're talking about, and the guidelines you've been working on, and I also want to give kudos to the whole financial team, that double A-plus rating is awesome, it really is.
Yes.
And we both know you've had the same hurdle for the last ten years. You're never going to get anything above that because of our predicament on those two areas, so, so you're doing, you're getting a hundred on what you can do, so great job.
Thank you.
Yay.
Anything else? All right, so, with that being said, we're going to move forward, and do we have correspondences?
Yeah, there are some. We've received an outline of the upcoming master plan public sessions. There have been two so far, August thirteenth and twenty, October twenty-second. The next is December tenth. They're held at, I believe, six thirty at, no, is it six thirty? Yeah, I think six thirty, at the Gates Middle School, and this topic will be on changing community and what that means to the next.
Actually, I'm sorry, it's actually only on December tenth, seven AM, the six o'clock community meeting.
Okay, I stand corrected. It's not on this flyer?
Yes.
Good, I would have been in the wrong place. Okay. Good to know.
It's on our Facebook page.
Uh, thank you, Lorraine. We also received correspondence from wreaths across America, which will be, the National Wreath Across America Day is December fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and the mission is to remember, honor, and teach to, carried out, let's see. It's a thousand locations around the country to honor the vets, so we can participate in that, that's a good thing.
That's a nice event. But may I make a comment? I actually emailed to that address to ask how I could buy a wreath. It's an American Legion whatever post, and I've received no response in about two weeks.
Oh.
So I hope that they're, that I'm the only one who dropped through the cracks there.
When I came in, I went online to their website, Wreaths Across America, they had it all.
See, I didn't, they, they gave you a choice of either going to the local post or to the, the big wreaths across America, and I went to the post just thinking, keep it local, but. So, maybe I just have to go to the. I was just hoping to keep the money local rather than.
I can get in touch with them and find out what the process is.
Yeah, well, if they would answer their emails, that would be good.
That concludes correspondence.
I think it's.
Approval of a minutes?
Motion to move to accept minute, meaning, minute, meeting, many minutes, it's late, for the Board of Selectmen meetings held on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen, and November fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion?
No.
What?
Mrs. Curran.
Second by Ms. Curran.
Oh, sorry. Second by Ms. Curran. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She counts how many times her name gets in the minutes.
Uh, we have a second motion, sir?
Well, I didn't, you know, I.
What's that?
We have a second motion for executive minutes.
For what?
Executive session?
Yeah. Uh, move to accept and not release the executive session minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting held on November fifth, two thousand and nineteen, since the matter discussed is still pending at this time.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Before we adjourn and sign documents, I just want to remind everybody that this Thanksgiving, as we spoke about earlier, the football game will be right behind us at the new stadium. Please come and, and join your fellow citizens in, in cheering on the Situate football team to victory.
What's their, uh, record this year?
Their record this year is, I think it's either six and four. They made the playoffs, and they lost to the number one seed in the playoffs.
Oh, that's too bad.
But actually, that's a good point. The soccer team.
Yeah.
The boy soccer team was undefeated this year, and they went into the playoffs, and they won two rounds, and then they lost in double overtime to.
Oh.
To Medway.
Medway.
Yes. Um, so it was a, a great game. Charlie Blacker scored the goal, a couple of the kids, I know Finn O'Connor's going to play college soccer, and it's a great group of guys, and they had a great season, so.
Well, congratulations.
And I wish I knew all the other sports teams off the top of my head, but, but I, maybe for next meeting.
One more thing?
One more.
The board would like to make sure that everyone finds Mr. Vignani tomorrow and wishes him happy birthday.
It's not tomorrow.
Oh. Monday, Monday. At the football game, feel free to sing to him.
Great, with that, can we adjourn, can I have a motion to adjourn and sign documents?
Let's say happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Indeed.
And so moved.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for staying late and filming.